We're fully functional with technology, so we'll get started tonight. First thing on the agenda, as always, are the mayor's comments. I'm happy to announce that Alberta Street has been paved. We had the asphalt company out, I believe it's Jernigan, and they were out putting down asphalt. They drove up there with a busload of jury students today, and it looks nice. Mr. Scott is here this evening. How did you take it?
You did a beautiful job out there today. They really did match the street up to the driveways perfectly. Just looked really good. And I want to thank the council for having the bull with the tail for us this picture some time ago and getting this thing done because people really appreciate it, and it could be just the right thing to do.
All right. Well, I'm glad that we have a resident who lives up there who can appreciate it firsthand every day. And I was very pleased when I took the students out there this afternoon. We're getting other little things done here and there, and I'm excited to comment on that Locust Street project. Keeps moving forward one piece at a time. That's all the comments I have. Next, we have the truck bids. Concession building, the goal is September 15th is when soccer starts. So we've got, in just right around three weeks, we've gotten a lot done on the concession building. We've got a foundation poured, a floorboard, we've got it plumbed in, we've got it framed in, we've got the exterior walls as far as the OSB on there. We're looking to put some sheet metal on the side. We've got it on the roof. Is that center cap on there yet? We're starting to get some of the wiring in. We're doing really well, moving forward. There's a lot to be done. I, one morning, took off work, went down with an air compressor and a nail gun, and I had to work alongside the guys. I can say I did not work near as hard as the guys around me, but I carried a shovel and grows the nails. And it was fun. I enjoyed myself. It was a different kind of stress.
I have one question on the Locust Street project. I had Debbie asking today, she's a bus driver. She was wondering if you had a timeframe for completion on that?
We're hoping to wrap up. Originally, we were hopeful it would run October 1st. Now we're looking probably mid to late October, I'm guessing.
Thank you.
Well, I know that the southern part will be filled in with asphalt tomorrow. We've got the gap between the curve and the original street. And they slurry concrete in there, and they're going to put about a three-inch layer of asphalt that'll match it up. So the southern half to a third will be more or less complete as far as the road is concerned. There'll still be the sidewalk that'll need to go in on the west side of the road. But the road will be more or less widened in the southern third as of tomorrow. Of course, we'll need to stripe it and do all those other things. Yeah, it's coming along. The workers are happy. Last I heard, they said it was one of the nicest, smoothest projects that they've had a chance to work on.
Is it still coming under? What would they expect you to do?
Yes and no. I don't know. I expect Mr. Culdrin, who will be on the agenda for the wastewater at any rate, and he should have some numbers. He's got some data from the city, from the administration, as far as the money going out to the workers, as far as what has been done. And he'll have the kind of a real-time estimate of what we've done, how much money we've got for our buck. And he'll be able to extrapolate that to give us an idea of what the entirety of the project is like. So hopefully, that will be done for our next meeting. I do have some figures up here, and I think they might be correct. I've got 740s. That might be 840. Debbie, how much was in the transportation fund, the amount you gave here?
That's probably, was about right.
I figured that we should, after July, have $600,000, about $600,000 after July and after our asphalt. But that may not... And Debbie will grab some.
But you're adding back in the $300,000 from taxes. Is that what you're doing?
No, no, no. That's, and I apologize. I had a student from jury come up today, and we gave him a tour of the city, and I kind of reduced him.
$738,000 today in that bank account.
$738?
Yeah, as of today.
No, it's clear.
No, it's clear.
$738,000 as of today?
Yes.
And that's after paying July? And July, we spent, July, we spent $83 on Locust Street.
I was thinking it was $100, but I could be off. July, we spent $104,000 net of the sales tax we took in that month.
What's that?
Well, we took in some sales tax, and that's just showing me the total transactions for the month.
Okay.
So I think we probably, it was 120 probably went out, and we got in $16,000, I think.
Okay. So with that in July, we'll probably have that much in August, I guess?
I've already got the August sales tax figure. The revenue is already in there for the $738.
Okay. But then we'll have the September for...
Expenses, yes, yeah.
Can you explain that more fully to us? I thought that project was coming out of transportation funds.
It's all transportation.
Yeah, this is our transportation.
That's the number I gave him.
Why is, why, I didn't understand when she said the sales tax that came in in July?
We had part of the sales taxes allocated strictly to the transportation fund, 1%.
Okay, I mean, there ain't no simple, simple thing. I kept books for years, still do. I think you'd have more accurate figures in the breakout there.
No, we're going where expenses are.
Oh.
You said next, explaining.
We know where our income is, but we don't know exactly what the Locust Street is going to cost us.
Well, I realize that, but I would think it would be a current figure someplace out there.
So we'll have about $550,000 in the transportation fund after August. And that'll leave us a couple more months of the Locust Street project. And the majority of this expenses will probably be wrapped up probably in September. So the October bill for Locust Street should be fairly small.
It should come in at about $525,000 now.
All in all?
Sure. I think Locust Street, 25, 75, and six and a quarter. We could miss that street by $50,000 because of the concrete, because of the labor factor. It's running longer than we anticipated it to run. I mean, we really thought that we'd be done by now.
Well, I don't think anyone thought that. I think we planned budgeting it for six months. Well, but we kind of wanted to keep things rolling for six months anyway. Worst case scenario.
We figured on moving some things after the six months of places.
Right.
And not just the Locust Street project. But it, some of those projects, it costs a lot of money, but sometime down the line, you're going to have to do it. If we've done it, have we done it? Finished it? Yeah, you know, it's just like, we're here, you know, we got a new parking lot today. It wasn't cheap, but it's going to add several parking spots to the city of Buffalo. Instead of trying to turn Maple Street into a one-way street, we picked up seven parking spaces where I ain't going to park it, and when I picked up one, we dropped that off. They were parking for that part now.
When it gets started, it'll be really good.
Roger Stachford, this is some good news.
Also, we blacked out down at the fire station.
Yeah, we had a little leftover asphalt. Instead of dumping it in the ravine, we went ahead and put it out in front of the fire station. Larry, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Truck bid, moving right along.
Mayor, I have just a couple of questions if I might.
Sure, sure. You know, we don't have...
I know the people out there on Locust Street, our brothers, so he thinks it's kind of behind schedule, but some do and some don't. And then the other question, does the city pay for all of Alberta Street, for the streets that you paid today? Okay, so the original owner is totally out of it? He had nothing to do with it?
For two reasons. One, he filed a bankruptcy law back, so that would release him hypothetically from any legal liability. And second, it's business law and the statute of limitations. That's right.
I thought so.
Yeah, our recourse to force him to do that would be born in law. We'd have to file a lawsuit, and so much time has passed that we would most likely be barred from being able to file a lawsuit. So we had two choices: do nothing and continue to blame the builder, or we can, you know, own up to a new responsible government to do it.
That answered my question.
There's taxpayers that live along there, and they've been paying their taxes, feeling a little bit mistreated. It's an ideal. Were there any other couple of comments? All right. Truck bid. I feel like Karnak every time I open an envelope. Do you guys remember Karnak as that before your time? I watched it late at night to get the...
I didn't stay up long enough to watch the whole...
We've got a used truck bid. We did publish that showing the minimum requirements. We've got one priced at $10.8, ground source systems. Let's see what truck. Is this going to be sufficient? I think we all know what truck it is.
It's a truck that needs to stretch.
I think these are the specifications, and that's the truck that meets that.
Correct.
I think so.
Make a motion to accept a bid.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
We have a second. I will call for a roll for Luke.
Wayne.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
James.
Hi.
Christie.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi. That motion passes. We have a truck. Is this going to be the mayor's truck?
Just buy the truck, and let Debbie and everybody else handle it. Because yours is a full truck.
All right. We have a purchasing ordinance on the agenda. Mr. Stafford, is your notion that we don't take any action, that we work on it a little further?
This ordinance says it was presented, has got to be rewritten. It's got a lot of, a lot of problems with it. And I think that it defeats what we wanted to do. It's made out of it because if, I say Roger because we made a budget for him to buy something with $500, he still has to do three bids. And that was what we were trying to get away from, was the give him authority to buy what he has to. And it's got, it's got three different levels, four different levels. I'm not sure we need all of the levels. I just think we need to table it and rework it and sit down and live it. We need, everybody should look at it, read it, make any variations, and... We need to discuss it all six hours. We really need to sit down in this case. This is a major one. This is a purchasing power. We need to do more than we, than we did. We looked at it and didn't, nobody really looked at it until, I think, today. Getting ready to go down tonight. Look at it, and I'm sure it's what we want. We want to change it. We don't want necessarily, this almost says we have to take a bid. That was one of the things we were really going to take out of this thing, was that if local people, if within reasonable, we were going to let, I mean, we needed to ordinance it. So I think all those things need to be rewritten and re-put into this. So, again, I know our councilman, our lawyer, wants the legal side of it, and we want the practical side of it. And so we've kind of got to work out what's legal and what's practical to the best of us.
And I'll say, go ahead. I said maybe the better thing to do is to come in after the brand-new ordinance, we work with the ordinances we have, shore them up to make them fit our needs.
We're going to have to take a piece of them at a time and redo that ordinance, change this on every day.
Here's a couple of comments. As you're all are looking, because I know that this request is going to come back, I suspect to need to make the changes. So make a list of things that you have issues with, and the other thing to speak to council and Stafford's issue on the, as you're looking at this, on the local bidding issue, you'll notice that as it's written now, the term of art used in every one of these sections is lowest responsible bidder. That has a legal meaning. And if you look at section 146.110, where it says lowest responsible bidder, you'll see that there are a number of criteria that you all should use in making decisions about awarding contracts. And there's nine of them. We can add or delete from those. But the purpose of rewording that section of the ordinance was to take into account, more so than the previous ordinance, the point that I think council and Stafford and some other councilmen pointed out, that you wanted to be able to take into account local preference. And so we can discuss it later after you all have a chance to read it, but it does do that right now as written. So in other words, if someone is not local, we can consider them not to let it fall back there. Here's the thing. Amongst other things, I mean, we don't want to take, at least I don't think you all want to take too narrow of a view about this because there may be situations where the local bidder is not the end-all, be-all in making a decision. And this ordinance should give you flexibility to make a responsible decision on behalf of the citizens of Buffalo about what is the lowest and best bid, so to speak. That's the goal. That's the purpose.
And that's nice and simple. Lowest and best, about nine different. And I know where you're coming from. You've got to defend, you've got to defend it when state comes down.
Well, you all have to defend it.
I will have to. I'd like a motion to adjourn.
So table. The next item is the aesthetics ordinance, and that's been recently marked up. We have a copy of that, and my plan was to table that for consideration and for the markup so we can get it shot as where we find it to be acceptable.
Well, you know, we left it one. It's all been changed. I don't think any of the years got a chance to really sit down and read it, to understand it, or read the other. It's entirely different, so we have, I think I have to table till we've had time to reread it and diagnose it.
Sure. It is so tabled. Are there any questions about that? All right. City website. Alderman Horn, I'll let you handle that back.
Mr. Kish is here to give us a presentation, but your computer just turned off. Like, as he said, city website.
And for the audience, I'll let the audience know, we did, the city did hire Mr. Kish to design a website for the city of Buffalo, and he has worked diligently to help get us something that is first-class, top-notch.
Ready?
Well, this is the design. We took a couple of pictures from around town. Probably what I need to know from you guys is what, word escapes me here, but what scene from Buffalo do you want to be greeted, people to be greeted with on the front page? And I chose this because this is a nice painting. And I have a few, that's just a sunset I took a picture of. That's actually looking from that way over Buffalo. That's the ice, that's after an ice storm. But we got the tower here. We have Maple Street. And there's a picture of City Hall and the soda machine and the garbage barrels. It's kind of photoshopped out, so that, it's cleaned up. Now, for the, for the content that goes on the front page, I have about eight stickies that'll be on the front, obviously starting with the city government. The thing I need to know from the police chief and the fire chief, because I have personnel, as long as you're all the same, I can update their info. Scratch out who isn't there anymore or if it's current, I'll just... Yeah, yeah, I'll give them. Probably. Yeah. And then fire chief isn't here yet, so... But I'll show you how I set this up. Just got the department heads encased in a little frame there, so it's neatened up a little bit. The, I have a, there's a calendar of events, so if you have a bunch of meetings for, like this deal here, it'll list it down in a line there. Or, obviously, here in the sidebar, we have, you can just click the date, if there's an event, and it'll give a map with directions to where it is, how to get there. And in the corner over here, date, time, the whole deal. I have pretty much all the essential stuff for the city listed in the menus now. If there's something else that you guys would like to see in there, you know, let me know, and I'll fill it in there. You know, I got the updated info for the airport. It's got the new guide. I mean, so I'm basically, you know, churches, I don't know. You just have to decide what you want on there, what you don't want on there, and if you like it. I mean, if you think it's attractive or... Oh, and I'm assuming the city has a Facebook page and maybe some of these other social profiles. Whichever ones we don't have for the city, we can just remove them. Whichever ones we do have, we can link to them. So if, oh, and these links down here, some of the links from the old side, he had like Department of Homeland Security, a bunch of different organizations. They were like local or state ones. They're not, the sites don't work anymore. I don't know if you want to put like, you want to list state links just in the side menu. You know, we can list that, too, elections, whatever it is, Secretary of State. So if there's, really if there's any questions, basically, my questions for you were, as long as the personnel is the same, I can keep it, you know, keep it current. If you have bios, whatever, for the personnel too, I'll need those. But...
We might get more recent photographs of our city in place.
I think that's planned.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think that one of the main reasons that we were here tonight was so that Ray could get the yes to go ahead because the way that the motion was made, it was, he gets paid if we like it, so...
Well, yeah, so...
That's probably we defense here.
Yeah.
Ray, let me ask you here. If I was a stranger and wanted to look at a website, how would I know outside of the map that we are a small rural area looking for industry, 26 miles with a four-lane highway located, 26 miles from a major metropolitan city? A little history about the town, if someone was looking to come to the town for a small industry, something like that?
There's an area history on there. You can update it to say, we have a four-lane highway with 26 miles from wherever. You can have a lot included. You can have a, you know, kind of bring your business to Buffalo page, or if you want to do something to attract...
These populations, there's 27. You see, that's 27.
Yeah, this was taken, I just, I took this from your website. I can update your numbers.
So you're going to take all the old information. All you've asked for us is to kind of paint it.
This is, he needs the old information as of right now to give a presentation, and now...
But we'll get new pictures of personnel if that's what we're going to do.
And he's, and he's got to work with Debbie and the ladies here at City Hall to find out more of a vision. I mean, because it just can't be his idea. We've all got to work together to decide how we want this to look. I think it would be a great idea to have a page with all of the empty buildings that are possible businesses that we could, we could, you know, list on there that if somebody was looking to open a business in Buffalo, they could go to this, and they could see exactly what kind of buildings are in Buffalo for business.
The Economic Development Committee, when it was up and running, got just a ton of data on economics and economic development about, on stock-inited stats. And that's something, and Pam Abden has all that, and Christie, I give it you for information.
Yeah, and I have it, and I think if we have the okay, that he's the man, and we're not going to do all of this.
Well, he's already, he's already been the biggest part of it.
That's right.
Steal his idea and not pay it.
No, he put the layout up here, so basically, what we need to do is approve.
This is on my side.
We need to move the layout, and if we like it, and give input.
I think that's what we wanted, wasn't it? I think this is the idea that we wanted. I don't believe...
Is there a motion that Ray be paid and allowed to get things up and running for us?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
All right. I'll call for a roll with Luke. Do you all have any idea, do you know what it's going to be, price wise?
Yes.
Keep it up to date.
Yes, I know.
It wasn't...
After he days.
James.
Hi.
Jim. Christie.
Hi.
Jess.
Hi.
Wayne.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
That motion passes.
Let me ask you something about the papers, your paper. Are we going to maintain it?
The city is, yes.
The city's fine. So these pictures of Buffalo and the tower, we can make, we can change them. Do those pictures belong to us?
Yeah.
So that we...
We have some other pictures that we took also that can, you know, we can kind of...
So that we can change it all for that and not have them to be, go out and take the pictures. Because Jamie Joy said he didn't like to take pictures.
You guys have to take pictures. Kind of like, kind of want to leave it open so that you all could kind of put your, give your input.
Well, I didn't like all of it. You don't have to have a sample of all we've gotten out of it.
You haven't looked it up yet?
No. It was so bad.
Did you look it up? Do you like this one better?
I like this, and then how is it better?
And this is comparable to what Bolivar and Republic has. Republic arrived with it.
I think it was Republic.
Republic has a wonderful site, and this closely mirrors theirs. And like I said, we get that economic stuff on there when, you know, a company can look up at our associate...
A lot more stuff to be examined on it, too.
Yeah, and we plan on...
Personal management.
Okay. And we plan on...
Oh, um...
And we can, they can, we can change the background, she can change the color, and he's got to agree with Debbie.
Go ahead and turn the lights back on, Bobby. A shock coming.
All right. Ray, thank you so much. Uh, budget work, uh, we're done with the, uh, city website, so we're ready for the, the fun budget stuff. Debbie, would you like to lead us in, in our...
Well, you want to take a break and then we'll...
Okay.
Kind of regroup, and that way if anybody doesn't want to stick around for a boring budget, they don't have to, but if they do...
Begin the crunching of the numbers.
Yes.
Okay. You're good, Nick.
Just get in here, and so I...
Are you hiding out? Okay, yeah.
Okay, so I will, you were asking about the...
So every month, we give the tax, whatever you're taking that month, a certain percentage of that goes to you.
No, the whole thing, we get, we get several checks, the debit card, there's several, so whatever we get for the general fund...
Have a payment, you're not living, right? Not bad.
So it all, it all goes to the state organization?
The state checks is, yeah, they send us separate checks for each different kind of tax we have out there.
That makes sense, okay, so, so in the month of July, you've already got your check, which would have been June's check?
Um, what we got in July would have actually been what the state received in May.
Okay, so...
Or what was, what was collected in May, for the most...
Okay, so they send you a check in July for what you took in?
What they took in for...
Okay, so that amount for transportation was...
I was given the injury numbers for August, so if you want me to go back to July, in July, we had eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars available for, for use.
Okay, that's what the balance was?
Yes, and then in August, we decreased that amount by a hundred and four thousand.
And that was transportation money?
That was what we took in, plus what we paid out.
Oh, okay, so, so, so the math, so, so you have, that's what I was wondering what the end amount was?
No, I was, yeah, I, I can, I can figure it out, but what the system does is it gives me figures by the month, so it's going to show me the net difference by the month.
Okay.
And that's what I shot at him.
That's, that information that, um, Jess was talking about. Yeah, all the stuff that he was just saying, he wanted on it, he had that in some kind of form?
I have a phone number for Lenny, how much they actually spend, how much, how much you spend.
So I haven't contacted her, but if you want to contact her, I'll give it to you. If you want me to, then I'll do it, it doesn't matter.
Well, doesn't, what, no other concern is that he wanted, he had a specific, uh, layout he was thinking for twenty-six miles, for whatever he said, we have this. Is there a certain format he wants that displayed in?
I don't know, I'll, I'll ask him, are you connected?
Transportation. All of the sidewalk projects, yeah, exactly, but, but you see, you see what I'm saying?
Yes, and I don't have that breakdown here, now I can pull the order, I can pull the minute book, and I have a breakdown there. But this, what I'm looking at now is just the GL listing, and it doesn't tell me...
But, but what I, I guess what I'm saying is, when, because when you break the...
I mean, yeah, we're, we're gonna get...
And you've got, you've got the transportation fund.
Mm-hmm.
The payments that are made for that have to total something. The income for that has to total something.
Yes.
You're giving me the difference of a hundred and four thousand, don't do it now, don't do it now.
It's really easy, it's in their regular, in their regular council packet at the month, the first of the month. They get the financials, and it's broke down in there, the revenue versus the expenses for all three funds. We have the general fund, the water and sewer fund, and the transportation fund. And then in December, we will be adding the capital improvements fund.
Bobby, his picture was on there? And he looked like he was about two hundred and twenty pounds. Can you pull it up real quick, or you can turn it off now? The old picture you, yeah, he's putting it up, and I'm like, holy cow, Bobby was fat. Then, then I see Roger, and I'm like, oh, yeah. And, and then...
Oh, I was lying.
Then I see Roger, I'm like, holy cow, Roger was not fat. So it's just like everyone swamped, uh...
Andrew just fried out confusing.
Yeah, that, I mean, the one that I gave him, the total of what we have, is what, is that's the most...
From a guy who doesn't know what color his shoes are.
I mean, like this one, like he's talking, totally, not talking about expenses.
And then income, you see what I'm saying? There should be something, I mean, like...
Yeah, I have to go print a financial report, then I usually just do that once a month.
Okay, don't do that for my benefit, but I want to see one later. And he brought me one, I think everything's whacked out of it. So, I'll read it when I get home.
Hey, if you, if you have expensive budgets, then maybe you're help, because you can't understand half the time, I don't know.
Well, you were hitting Roger, right? We were discussing about the taxes.
He kept his word?
We go over my council packet, and we're bringing it over. I was used to it, it's a different format, very simple, like, okay, this is how much we have, this is how much we spent, this is what's left over, and this is what we expect.
Fine, yourself?
It wasn't completely out that way. Well, I, I, I'm gonna answer some information. Nice seeing you. Yeah, you too.
There's a beer right here.
Looks good, Christmas.
Wayne, how was Disney World?
Wonderful.
You boys had a good time, how long were you there?
Six days.
So, how long, where did you stay?
We stayed at Animal Kingdom.
Oh, I didn't know. I had Doc, and I was there in February, where we went through the Animal Kingdom park and everything. I guess you did all, everything, stayed in there. We stayed at the Dolphin again this time, I stayed there.
At where?
The Dolphin Hotel, one of the, there was the Dolphin and the, and the Swan. And I remember the first day we went, it was a little, it was one of the big dudettes, it was brand new. First people to stay in a room even in the old, so I didn't have any willings of that, it was a certain thing I'm always... So you and Pam and the two boys?
No, Angie, Angie and I are the two boys.
Ah, that's your name?
Yes, thank you.
Pam doesn't like Europe, and she doesn't like Disney World.
Europe or Disney World, I don't question, but anyway, so you guys had a great time, ate, ate lots of good stuff?
Ran it, rented a car.
Yeah, oh, you did, so you actually go around some.
I don't know what she's gonna do.
I didn't do nothing.
We, we went to the...
I have been, I have been schooling.
Yeah, yeah.
Homeschooling.
Went to all the places several times. Went early before the big crowd could use the fast pass.
Yeah, right.
Until they get to their grade and then get done, that's good. I would have avoided.
Eight and six.
Yeah, I'm trying to go.
But you don't have animal...
Oh, I bet.
They've got a, they've got a, we started, contemporary, uh, two years ago. I like that.
Contemporary, the one that the, uh, there's one that the train used to drive through.
No, I do, well, the go-stairs are temporary.
Yeah, I knew I did it with that one years ago when we were down.
No, you're staring, it's making me nervous.
Thank you, Debbie.
Oh, no problem.
All right, are we ready, does everyone have the calculators up? Debbie, I hate to ask you, but do you know our, our, uh, our budget book?
Uh-huh, you lost yours?
Do you have, no, it's in City Hall West, it's got an extra copy.
You know, I made one extra copy.
Knowing that you would eventually give it to me?
Knowing that someone would need it. It may have marks in it, but... They're just scribbles, if they are, so... There you go.
All right. Looking at the scribbles, and it says, why is Mayor so dumb?
It isn't in there. That would have been on the little note in my dad's.
Very. Debbie, would you like to get us started?
I am to the listening point, I have said everything I had to say at the last meeting, so you guys are down to talking to the supervisors. I redid kind of the expenses for the fiscal year so far, um, and I kind of just did a break-off date of July thirty-first, you know, because payroll happens every two weeks, and so this is the break-off date, and I've done those expenses by department, that you all wanted, so it's kind of, everything's there, and I think Bobby was slated to go first, so...
Was he?
He was.
Okay, well, we can run through that. No, no, you're fine. Uh, Debbie, I was gonna mention, it, this you made up, we, we talked about it a little bit earlier. Did you see anything in there kind of out of, out of the ordinary?
What was that, I'm sorry?
Out of, out of your expenditures for this year?
Out of my expenditures for my department?
No, no, the, the, the list you compiled for everything.
I really honestly from, I mean, if you guys have specific questions, but I really didn't see a lot of waste. When I went through line by line, um, I mean, it took me, what did I say, two and a half days to go line by line through each budget? But I didn't see a lot of waste, I tried to group it for you, so if you have specific questions, I have the GL detail for every account that I've looked at, but, and the department heads were provided copies of these in advance of the meeting with the understanding that if you guys had questions, you would direct them towards them. So, towards our expenses.
And I can tell the world, when I first became mayor, I was just inundated with things. Roger would come to me and say, Mr. Mayor, we need a set of tires for the truck, and it's gonna be eight hundred dollars. And I would, oh no, and then the next day, something at the wastewater treatment plant was broken down. And it seemed like every, every other day, one of our department heads would come to me with something that's just, uh, expensive. And after a while, I, I asked him, I said, guys, are we just having a, you know, bad luck of everything breaking down, or is this normal? And they, they seemed to indicate to me, no, this is kind of normal maintenance, this is, you know, the stuff that, that always seems to happen that, that gives us job security. So, uh, I almost asked Debbie to go through and pull all those tickets and compare them la, uh, previous years, but this is kind of what she has done here, to give us kind of a run of, of all those tickets, compared to what our budget is and what we spent. Bobby, what can you do without?
Besides a telephone, I know you don't need one.
Yeah. You don't need a telephone, do you, given the circumstance?
You know, that's where our rainouts, um...
The only thing is a cell phone is day and age.
Right, when we, when I see a building, you know, someone calls me Saturday morning. And I think that's why we've done it for the convenience, is we leave our rainout scheduled, whether it's, you know, for softball, soccer, just pushing their, hey, there's some games we made up in the season.
You leave a message, and they call that?
And they call in, and they go straight to that. You know, I know in the past...
That makes sense, thanks.
You know, with Facebook and stuff, I know I posted on mine, and we posted on the cities as well, too. You know, but not everybody is up to that kind of knowledge either. There are some people that do sports that they don't even read the paper, they know the points are out there.
Well, it looks like your biggest single item is, are trophies?
Yes. You know, we order trophies for everybody, everybody who orders a trophy, they play it.
That toilet ran, it was gonna go by the way inside, didn't it?
That is, yes, it is, you know. And why don't we take the pool?
Well, I just think, let me ask you this, Bobby, do you, uh, on the trophy, since it was thirty-four hundred dollars last year, and you were talking about building new ordinances or regards to purchasing, uh, do you just buy them, or do you bid them, or...
Oh, I have a shop that I always go to, now that's, I don't totally, on trophies and stuff, you know, I, I could all thought, I mean, screen soccer every time, I mean, you know. They add a lot.
It's part of our program.
Right, and honestly, I like when we get trophies everywhere, I believe, I think it's something that precedes it, but it's something that the kids do look forward to. I mean, it is not kind of nice seeing that five-year-old, when he gets that trophy, he's still...
Well, Ryan didn't win a game this year, but he came with that trophy, and you would have thought he won in the Super Bowl.
I mean, uh...
And, and that is nice.
So, that's not a question, not a question, I think you ought to give them, it's just to make sure that we get them.
With a fair price.
At a fair price.
And I do, um, VJ's trophy is probably the biggest supplier, they do all the school, there's a AC's trophy in Balver. I tried getting a substitute a few times, but it's not as easy to work with. The nice thing with VJ's is, I call them, tell them how I'm looking for, I always tell them price, that's difficult, which is two seventy-five a trophy.
We're trying to keep this in mind, that if this ordinance has changed, uh, you will have, you will have to have a bid. I mean, if we change it, I'm assuming that's what we're gonna do on three thousand dollars worth of equipment, that we will ask you to come up with a comparable bid, so as you plan your future for next year, kind of keep that idea in mind, that you can back up what you purchase with another, another bid. I think you do a good job, I don't have any problems with that, I don't have any problem with the money. This, this takes a lot of money.
And that, that thirty-four eighty-nine fifty was over several different purchases, is that correct?
Yeah, that's a problem, I mean, that's two seasons of soccer.
I'm sorry, maybe I should have explained what those are, the top number on each one, the highlighted number, is the total for that category, and then the breakdown is each line beyond that.
Now, your capital, your capital expenditures that you have gone and, you've got picnics for forty-four hundred dollars, soccer bathrooms and concessions for three thousand, what, uh, what actually is, are you asking for, or isn't that it?
No, that's what we asked you, yeah, when they built the picnic tables and everything. The only thing this year that I'm asking for is just the AB compliance for food. And that's not really asking for, that's...
AB, we have to do that.
That's something we have to do. They, they already put an extension on it, and it started, I had it done by April, and there was a lot of up boards, so they put it through January. Um, I put seven thousand dollars roughly down there, that is for the big pool and the baby pool. My understanding as of right now, we have to have one of those lists, add each body of water we add. To me, I think it's completely a waste of money to put an AB in, in our one-foot baby pool. So, you know, I'm gonna try to do some more research to see if somehow that can be waived, or, you know, if that goes under some...
It has to have someone trained, specially trained to run that list. You've got beer pools, we're on those lists and everything, too. If I read that, I'll...
You know...
I didn't read that, but...
But it's in some of the literature.
I know that, it sounds like you've looked into this, I fully expect, I mean, I'm not trying to take over, but we probably ought to look at that, because I know this is typical federal government. They put on this ridiculous requirement, and then everybody goes, I mean, every municipality that's three thousand people or thereabouts will say, we can't, we'll just shut our pool down, we can't afford to do that. So I suspect that they may provide some exceptions to that, so we may want to look into it before we...
So they let skip this one year?
Right.
And, I mean, that's why I put the seven thousand dollars just in worst case scenario, um, that that is what we could spend, hopefully it's after that.
My, my comment isn't a budget issue, I'm not trying to derail, I just wanted to mention that to you.
Also, they've got a school down here at Branson, if you're gonna run the pool this year, it teaches you exactly the chemicals and everything that you need to learn how to keep it clear, and everything, it'll cost you nothing, go, you just gotta register. I think whoever's going to run the pool needs to go to that, because that way we wouldn't have to waste the chemicals, know what to treat it with, what with, and when burn it out.
I, I think what wasn't a problem this year, though, we overcleaned it.
How much chemicals?
The valves, for, last year, um, we had to replace the valve, and, you know, when we closed all off for winter, we'd replace it right at the end of the season, I just miscommunication on which way the valve was pushed, we didn't do a proper job.
By the right chemicals, you got to play concert, I know. I bet, and I know if you don't know what you're doing, then you're starting out at it, you're fighting your head against the wall.
What, what happened this year is we were not circulating through our sand filter.
That's right.
As soon as we turned the valve the other way, so certain, certain, they were cleaned up in a matter of, they...
After we blew up the chemicals, you know?
No, we hadn't had no chemicals whatsoever, it was all just through our sand filter, we just were not going to, basically, there's a T-section, then we're just going to do the pipes, if, once we open that valve up, we need to do our sand filter.
The chemicals won't work through the, the sand filter, start. Well, this twelve thousand in revenues, that is strictly from the concession stand and, and it's from the pool.
We're looking on the...
I'm looking at what it was this year up to date, your, your, your revenues is twelve thousand four thirty-six, is that? My question is, that's the baseball revenue as, as well as this one? My question is, that's the baseball revenue as, as well as this running pool?
The pool, the pool's separate, the pool's on the first page.
I'm gonna assume that's, um, sponsorship, um, and registration.
Okay, your pool is five thousand dollars, you got right, for your revenues?
The pool's sixteen, what I'm seeing on my.
I see the pool, my ice community stand.
The third page would be the park.
Sixteen thousand three oh five.
Do you live in the pool?
Now, that's all, that's emissions and concessions. And then on.
And that would also probably, uh.
Then on the park, that's assault or entries as well as the concession stand. Our, our concession stand down there comes out of a general fund.
Yep, I was wondering about the concessions, do you guys keep an inventory on concessions? Like the stuff that you.
But it's, it's, it's never balanced out, Bobby, it's never balanced, it comes out of general fund, there's no set fund for concession stands, what we spend.
I'm just wondering, cause in the budget that she's got printed, there's only pool concessions for what you've brought in, there's nothing for park concessions?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the.
Where's it at?
No, I'm talking about on this.
No, no, I'm talking about the.
That's, yeah, that's, it shows an expense for concessions for the park and then an expense for concessions for the pool, but there's only one income that's pool concessions. So, I'm wondering, I mean, I'm not trying to be nitpicky, but if, if you're buying and selling, there needs to be an inventory and we need to see if we're actually making money on concessions, is it we're not?
We eat inventory on everything.
So, can I see the inventory?
But, anything.
That's not what you said, she wants to know how much she bought through the pool, what it made, how much she lose and everything like that.
I, I'm just wanting, I'm just wanting to know, are we paying for lifeguards to eat our candy bars and drink our sodas, is there, I mean?
No, they have a completely separate sheet that they mark it, they, they go get water, which they're allowed to do, they mark it on their sheet.
So, you can, we, I'm just wondering if we can see an inventory of cost of goods sold and see if we're making money on it. Or if we're losing money on concessions.
I'm sure we can, I mean, that's probably gonna be a question for Debbie and me.
Check them out on that page.
Because it says that the pool concessions as of July twenty-fourth, we brought in three thousand fifty-six dollars. And total concessions that we spent, park and pool, is three thousand nineteen that I added up on this page. So, I was just wondering.
I do know most of our concession expenses is dealt with the pool. And that's probably gonna be most of the income as well. That is the biggest.
Okay, so Debbie, do we have, uh, more information on concessions, is there an inventory? Is the pool concessions that's on our budget that you gave us, is that pool and park?
No, it would just be, the pool is separate from the park on concessions.
So, we, do we have an amount of what we made for park concessions, or you could just spend money on?
Um.
Sorry.
I look at my.
Well, as of July twenty-fourth, let me just do that, it was, you, and you don't have anything going after that date, do you? Oh, no, I'm sorry, I can go look it up on the computer for you, it's all line item into one, into the park revenues.
So, all of the concessions is under pool concessions on this?
No, all of the park, if you flip to the second page, it shows revenues of the park. Oh, I'm sorry, on these sheets here, the park, on this one, if you go to the very first page, Kristy. Um, about halfway down that first set of numbers, it says Dallas Community Park and the concessions and everything is all in that one category.
On which?
Does it define Debbie?
On this sheet, it's right here.
Oh, okay, it doesn't say park, it's Dallas Community Park.
Dallas Community Park.
Okay, so that's not all concessions.
No, no, that's everything for the park.
So, we don't know how much we have concessions, or if we do.
Don't we buy the candy bars, pop and everything out of our general fund?
Well, the two departments both buy concessions out of their different departments that sell concessions. So, the park's concessions are completely separate from the pool's concessions.
And do we keep a rolling balance of what they lose and what they profit, that's what, that's what we're wanting to have?
Um, for the park, I'm gonna have, I would have to go line by line and figure that out for you. For the pool, it isn't, it, it's easier to figure out because of the way the general ledger's set up. The same, if we're talking the pool, Kristy, if you go to the same page, it says pool concessions is the line above.
Yes, I was just wondering if that was all the concessions, I didn't notice it, Dallas County, Dallas Community Park, I was just looking at the park. So, because if that's all we brought in and we spent just as much, I was wondering if it was all lumped in as one?
No, we should've, he should, I mean, if he spent twenty-one hundred, then he should've brought in four thousand dollars, is that not right? So.
It says three thousand fifty-six as of the twenty-fourth.
Oh, I missed, oh, sorry, from the park.
Yeah.
And the pool concession numbers would be final.
So, we know that we did make money on the concessions for the pool.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, everybody, it, there, there's a set markup in there, Bobby, what's the markup? It's fifty to fifty percent mode for the most part, is that correct?
You know, I think what it's, like Kyrae, I think we get the twenty-six cents, and when we buy, you know, a pinch point four, we sell for a dollar. Something like that, and then maybe, maybe, it's not quite, maybe Kyrae might be fifty something, but, I mean, we do mark it.
It might be a good idea to have an inventory that we can see just to make, I mean, it just keeps everybody from wondering, I mean, yeah.
That's right.
I'm not accusing anyone, it just, if you're buying and selling, it would be a good idea.
We keep it.
They do, they do, it's a daily thing, yeah, so that's where, I mean, if you're asking for the number for the whole season, I don't have that.
Yeah.
Whereas they keep it in a daily, every day they reconcile, do you want me to get one of those sheets so you can?
I'm saying it would be a good idea to, to share that information with the council.
Okay.
See, that's what's wrong with it, I ask them whenever, I ask them, and they don't show, we don't see it. That's what starts, like the one I know on Donnie McDaniel, that's what he was bragging about, you know, trying to reputation and all that stuff he was trying to get, stuff like that.
Each, you know, if I go to the softball game, um.
I've seen them play candy.
Candy is here because we've had such a problem with break-ins in there. I mean, when I first started, we kept everything out there and we'd get broken, we wiped out. Now, we just keep the soda because we kinda have to, this is cool. I take the candy out there, as soon as it gets out of the park, we count. Before we even open the session, count it, you know, let's say we have beginning totals and then when games are over that night, we have ending totals.
I, I'm just suggesting that maybe, I mean, I know it makes more work for you, but possibly in your report, your monthly report, we could have a copy of that so that we can see, you know, what the inventory is, it just.
That's exactly right.
I don't know if that's a good idea or a bad idea, which is something I was wondering about concessions.
Cause I've seen the kids down there, they don't play cookie, you don't wanna talk them down.
Yeah.
We've been around, we've watched, you know. There's a lot more goals, goals away, we don't know.
Obviously, there'll be some non-essential numbers, I mean, that obviously will be on the report.
This is a little historical, and I just made one copy, but somebody actually at one time specifically asked for revenues versus expenses in each program. And so, I did actually do that breakdown, so, but it's a couple of years old now.
What would you change?
Would I change on our budget?
No, not anything. Park, you have the pool and the two parks.
Yep. We're working on that now with the concession and that, and that probably would've been the one more thing I needed. And I, I've been in this position four or five years, I think, and I'm sad. Not having green water in concession stands, I mean, it doesn't seem like a big deal, but it really is, and the timing transfer, you know, on Saturday, soccer's over, I take everything up to the park, soak it, wash it, you know, that, I mean, just, it would be very handy to have, so, I mean, all right, now, I think we're moving in the right directions for this park. There's not a lot that can be done with our pool, you know, we can make it look as pretty as we want, it's still a rectangle pool, that's not a caption. I mean, I, I hate to be a negative person, but that's just true. And you can drive twenty minutes in a direction, go to a slide pool with an indoor, outdoor, I mean.
Who's your kid was found this year?
Um.
I don't know who he was, I didn't see him any other many times, but I saw a couple of people over there during the day.
And I guarded a few times down there this year, cause we were in this crowd, it started off slow, midday, I mean, it was pretty cool, I mean, there'd be, there'd be thirty, fifty people in there.
I had a couple of people out there across the street, I see the damn thing every day.
The revenues were actually above budget.
Do you know what the average attendance is?
No, I don't.
Am I not looking at the pool right? I don't see any labor factor in these pages.
Those are the expenses, Jess, those are our, our expenses.
I imagine that there's not labor, not any expense to, charged to the pool?
I, 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 th- those are.
Is it Debbie?
Well, it, you didn't, you actually specifically said you wanted me to do the supplies, not the labor. But on the pool, I did go ahead and add the expenditures, the labor for the pool is in the bottom number that you see on these sheets that I did for you.
Cost of operation, and that eighteen thousand dollars?
It cost you ten thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars to open the pool. And that did include, I did add the labor in there on top of these expenditures that are listed.
So, according to what you're saying here, basically, uh, the pool costs the city of Buffalo thirteen thousand dollars to operate for the year. It's bottom line, that's what it costs us. And that's with profits from candy and that's, that's expenditures on all the chemicals and everything else you spent on. Right, and the same way with the park board?
Yeah, those total expenditures included labor when I did that for those two parks.
The park board, the park costs us forty-five thousand dollars to operate it for the year.
And that was as of July thirty-first, so that's not for the entire year now.
It's not coming into the fall baseball season and the soccer program.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, pretty close, and, and it's not a deal, we have a soccer program that costs us a lot of money because it's all for the kids. Is that, is that program pretty expensive to the city to run the soccer program?
Um, Kristy actually has the historical numbers on that, that'll kinda give you a better idea than I did.
Just general numbers?
Yeah, it's, cause that was broke down, somebody had asked me to break it down by a program, that was, that's a couple of years old. But it actually breaks down the revenues and expenses, expenses for all the different programs that he ran in that one or two-year period, do you remember that? Roughly, I mean, it was a couple of years ago when I did that breakdown.
So, the soccer is just, you know, the fall soccer.
Yeah, my main, my main expense is for soccer.
We can't raise the price to the kids or the families, it's pretty tough on them, and they make this worse. I mean, it's a whole.
Yeah. I think the main thing is if you see an area where you can save money, then you need to save something.
So, I know last year, you know, we went through a cut part of it, um.
Such as the painting down at the park, which a girl brought up the other day, that Bobby should've done that and everything. Is that right Bobby? Poor Gary Stafford painted the.
Picnic tables?
Picnic tables, and they was, he brought his bill in, he was told, he was told that you should've done it.
No, 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 that, that, here, here.
We told him today, Stafford told him.
I was never told to do it.
No, no.
He was told I could've done it.
Yeah, and when he brought his bill in, he was told he should've, you should've done it.
Well, no, that is.
No, I'll disagree with you David, cause I know. I know, but he didn't get his, he didn't get his check for it. Well, he should've got paid, he did the work, that doesn't make any difference whether he should've had or not. When we asked Stafford to paint the pavilion down there, at that time, he was there, paint, paint the, the tables, you're on top of them, you'll pay them in less time and less labor. And we did, so, uh, I authorized it. Well, yeah, I would've too. Standing right down there with a paint gun in his hand, we'd paint the pavilion, we'd authorize that. And, and I told, uh, man, I said, paint the tables, you're here, let's get them done. But he brought his bill up here, and he was told that Gary should've done that, they didn't authorize it.
Well, that, that, that ticket came in late because he had to order more paint. And it, and it took Bill Chapman a while to get that in. And, and that's why we got that late, we were trying to get a bunch of stuff done before the fair. And, uh, it was pointed out that ordinarily, we wouldn't pay someone to paint picnic tables because that's something Bobby could have done. Or something that we've done in the past with volunteer labor.
But he comes to me today, said he wasn't paid for the painting that, that.
That, that was on our last, I think, minutes of bills when it was approved.
He comes to me today and said he hadn't been paid.
We ought to go up there and it wasn't approved that night, four hundred and twenty-five, four seventy-five, I. Well, it'll be on, it'll be on the next month, and I guess we could probably approve it tonight, but it'll be on the next minutes of bills.
Yeah, because we were trying to get the park in shape for the fair and we didn't have a lot of time and you can't. Well, I'm not saying anything about that, I'm just saying he hasn't been paid. Well, he should've been paid, I mean, that's. That's what I'm saying, but he stopped me today.
He did it, he stopped me today.
Has that been added to the minutes and bills?
Well, that's what I was getting ready to say, that bill is dated August thirteenth, which was the date of your last council packet. Your cutoff time for paying bills on the August thirteenth meeting was noon on August ninth. So, you got it four days too late in order for it to be paid this month. No, so it'll, it's in to, for you guys to present to pay in September, and that's what I went and checked.
He was told, you heard that too?
He did, he done my house painting there too, I saw him.
Well, I should've, he was told, he was told by someone up here that Bobby shouldn't, that they shouldn't have to pay him anything.
I will have to check into it, cause I don't know anything about it.
I heard it, so I know what I'm saying. Oh, he painted, I said, your big, I heard.
I heard it, I've only heard it.
Painted all of the sun pavilion down there.
There's a lot of.
Yes, there were several, he's probably painted them, he's, he painted the rails on the pavilion building at the time he did it. Gary did a lot of work down there, we were pushed, we were trying to make everything look nice prior to the fair. And, uh, I don't have any of his bill, I can't make him do it. Four hundred, four hundred and ten five dollars. The other time he painted.
Oh, that, that was sure pavilion and all that, that's tables.
That was the whole thing? See, that's pretty sure.
That wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't a pavilion.
No, it's everything else, it was the, the rails, it was falling. I know, it has, if we, that makes any difference if we do them or not, those things have got to be continually done or that. Oh, I'm not bragging about that, I'm just saying what he told me. He's gonna get his money and that's, so was that.
So, we tell you, it's time to wait, because this, this, this is a totally vague.
Going on, you were a question on cutting stuff, my official will go down because in last year's budget, we were still doing basketball and dodgeball at that time, we no longer doing those sports.
Basketball?
Yeah, we're no longer doing that, and dodgeball, because of the renovation to the land center, decided not to. I added a law up in place on that, I did a lot of kids that still wanna do it.
When did we decide to not do that?
Not do what basketball is like.
When we did the old mansion.
I remember when we decided not to do basketball, because Hawaii was doing basketball.
We didn't, it was good, but it was all because of reading the mansion and I had to tear it up. Dodgeball, I don't think will, because I use softball as a.
Dodgeball's wildly popular.
Very popular, I have a lot of kids that read, when softball, basically a long one, we saw, we, dodgeball, cause we were in March, in November, we did. I wouldn't mind doing that again, but, you know, that's.
And we won't, dodgeball will tear up the, the mannequin.
I wouldn't think so, no.
No, we can go ahead and do it. It'd be on you.
That's, you're right, it's called, I mean, you know, but that will be an extra expense for. That's, you guys' fault, I mean, you know, but that will be an extra expense for, uh-
I have a question for Debbie, I'm sorry. Okay, I, this is so confusing, and I may be completely ignorant, but I'm just gonna ask, this says, this, the, the thing that you made up today for the pool, as of, spent as of seven thirty-one twelve, wouldn't this just match what we got handed out for our expenses in August? Because the numbers are different, I mean, wouldn't-
It included the bills that were paid in August.
So, it's not spent as of seven thirty-one twelve?
They're gonna be different because it does include bills that were paid in August, because they were spent in July.
What? Say that one more time, sorry. Because it says spent as of seven thirty-one twelve, but then-
Yeah, Martha, Martha gave me that cutoff date on, based on the bills that she put into the computer, but this includes bills that you paid. This bill was paid on August eighth, but it was, you bought it before, back in July.
So, wouldn't it be on this too, that we got?
No, no, it, it could possibly match your next month's, but this is more up to date than this.
Why is it like that? This is, this is really difficult to understand.
Because I, I, I misunderstood, I thought you guys wanted the most recent data, and so we had paid bills one time since the last council meeting. I mean, you pay bills after the council meeting, so I just included the most recent data.
So, yeah, your name, the dodgeball, it's gonna be a hundred percent.
Does, does the kids like it a lot?
Kids love it.
Why don't they do dodgeball?
She's taking a lot of room down there, with a lot of, a lot of money.
Well, we only run it through eighth grade, and we don't do high school.
Is the abandoned center booked on the nights you've ordinarily run it?
Well, no, I mean, it wasn't, we, uh, you know, did, for a while, then on Mondays, of course, once a month, and I would miss me, so we moved it to Tuesdays. I think one time, I think I ran into an election problem and had to have it on Monday, but other than that, no, I mean, it's not usually anything.
Oh, your dodgeball, you, yeah, let's go ahead and have it, unless there's any objections about it.
No, it's just for the kids, they're making it.
Yeah, they like to do it.
Yeah, they like it, it's for the kids, I mean, you wanna go play dodgeball?
Dodgeball's not gonna cause problems, it's definitely not a law.
No, I mean, I-
Basketball's kind of-
Dodged ball?
Yeah, I don't, their gator skin is, that, there's a bunch of different brands out there, they're that soft, it's what all the schools have.
A hundred percent.
You have a suggestion for the audience?
No, I just have a question, uh.
Talking myself, not, not worth it, life too short.
I'm trying to figure out who the "we" was that decided not to have it in the first place, is, is that all at your discretion as to what sports are played?
No, I believe when we started doing that, that's-
Who's the "we"? Who's the "we" that decided not to do it?
One, two, three.
Yeah.
So, Andrew, Bobby and I talked about it. Sit down, sit down and determine which sports are being played, that's what I wondered, who, who actually decided, so then, it was decided not to have it, right?
And I don't recall it many, but if, if you tell me what I, what I-
It's been-
It's been a long time ago.
I mean-
Okay.
Yeah.
It was right when we first talked about-
The abandoned center and doing the improvements and painting and all the money that was gonna be spent, and we wasn't sure how the basketball was gonna affect-
I remember the Y was gonna take over basketball, so that's a-
They did, and that was all that same conversation.
That's a good point, okay.
At one point, we did pre-k through secondary basketball, Y did third through sixth, when this came up, that's when we had the meeting and said, "Let's just give the whole basketball program to the Y," and did that, they don't have the facility to run basketball.
Okay.
They would be going all the way to Y, we have somewhat of a close-
Why don't we go ahead and just do dodgeball, and, uh, the kids will enjoy it. Bobby, is there anything that, that you could do without you cut out of your budget?
You know, looking like I said, the umpires and officials, obviously Debbie's already marked it down, fifteen hundred from last year, because, you know, that takes away senior basketball, um, so I know that can be cut, um, you know, I know, I mean-
We talked about the telephone, cutting the telephone out, uh, building enough cancellations.
John, that's up to you guys, I, I mean, the biggest thing is letting people know on Saturday morning at eight o'clock that soccer's canceled.
Yeah, I think, I think you need that.
I mean, my, on a Saturday morning, the soccer's canceled, I come in, I call every coach that I have, and then I go out to the park, put on the answering machine, softballers that were-
And they really have brief reception.
Has been canceled.
So, but the phone line is at, so that, at, at, at the park, and the answering machine's there?
Yes. Yes.
And they get a message when they call, you don't answer the phone there at that side?
Is there any reason why we couldn't just do that here?
Can we, can we have a hotline number for soccer, and, and it costs us three dollars more to get the line here, and there's, it's put at my office, it's-
They're not open here on Saturday, right?
No.
So, it wouldn't end your business to-
Right, but this is obviously more, it's a phone system as well than-
Yeah, it's a very modern system.
And, and that is a possibility, but it's, you know, obviously there'll be a transition area.
Not everybody's got computers.
I know, I think, I think you need to work.
I think it's good to put it on the website, but not exclusively.
Like I said, I, uh, posted on the city's Facebook when we started.
Occasionally, you'll have tournaments where teams are coming here from how the area they're playing, are, are fees for that do much in line with all the other areas, or do you know it?
Um, you know, I don't know a hundred percent, like, on our softball, we rent it for twelve fifty a field per day, it's just twenty-five bucks to rent both fields, um-
So, they do the tournament?
Yeah, they rent everything.
They just pay to use the field?
Mm-hmm, and then if it's a night, they pay, I think we figured if the umpire's five dollars an hour, so we go, uh-
That's what we paid years ago for Little League, when I was president of Little League baseball, we paid the school, you know, all the, I mean-
That probably more paid from last time.
Probably more.
I thought we looked at that just a few years ago, and it was roughly the same, I mean, because we really did our form, and then we charge two fifty deposit for using a scoreboards, because those are-
Talking, yeah, charging a little bit of money, I'd be like charging for the free.
They, they pretty serious.
Yeah, they, they do all that.
No, we're just furniture.
The only thing we don't charge for is, like, the high schools, they had their tournaments last weekend, we don't charge them. Uh, but I have a pretty good relationship with their athletic director and stuff, you know, if they were to break one of our school boards, they're gonna fix it.
That's fine.
Um, and then the mayor has the right to waive that fee for any kind of benefit. Like Melva Sharp, I'm almost proud of, she doesn't pay to rent the bills, because she has her softball turned down for fifteen years, and that money goes to scholarship for a kid, and she also tries to donate something back.
If you're thinking about raising the price of beer down there?
Yeah, that's the worst, so I'll be your first.
I'm against that, Jess, I'm against that one.
Are you'd be against it?
You know, I have a lot of teams up right at night that, "Oh, these other parks sell beer," I think that-
It's the teams, right?
I think that's a problem.
I think it's the teams, teams.
Yeah, because I think the player complex is pretty thoroughly cased, they're behind us.
That's not a city complex.
I, you know, I just think it's a problem we don't want you getting to.
The one that's grateful for those beer.
I think the main thing is for you to be vigilant, stand and constantly look, not, no, it might cost more money, but look for ways to, you see what we're talking about? Way to improve our dislikes. I personally was disappointed with the swimming lessons this year, I thought the gala last year did much better, uh, with the swimming lessons than this year, had nothing to do with you, I guess, but I just didn't think they, they did much of anything.
Well, I mean, on that, as a whole, uh, the lady last year took more pride in the pool than the lady did this year, uh, I think-
I don't think there's any question about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had Cammy Miller, she was wonderful, I said.
And she was really, really good with the swimming.
And I think we learned some lessons on looking for someone in the future to make sure that, you know, they actually have pride in the pool, and it's not just take some of your dog.
Because if it was the same mud, I would take the grand gift of all of it, that's what I would like now.
Bobby, anything you think we could cut, should cut?
No, it's that, like I said, the telephone, if you got it, I mean, we can figure out a different way, but I do think it's-
And the toilet rental, obviously, is gonna be gone.
Yes, hey, my umpires and officials will go down a little bit.
Out of the park, we've had a few welding supplies, grinding supplies, painting supplies, that was for upkeep there at the abandoned center, is that correct?
Uh, that, and I think building the picnic tables as well.
Okay.
I mean, I think that was the cost of that.
No, one thing, I didn't even notice this, and I forgot to ask, says Sam, Sam's Club members, a hundred and fifteen dollars, what's that for?
That's our monthly leadership, for, for the city, the city has to pay commercials, I think.
Yeah, we, to have that direct bill account, they charge extra money for that.
Each department or just for the city?
No, we charge everything, the main department that uses Sam's Club is the pool, so that's why just, the whole fee was charged to that department.
So.
Because the main thing we use it for is the concessions, I mean, we use it all year round to get small stuff, but the main thing is concessions for the pool.
Any other questions, Bobby? Do we want to excuse Bobby?
Loosen up on offense, invite another man from Stanley, I know.
Appreciate it, guys.
We're gonna move on to the police, but we're doing fire department tonight, too, is that correct?
Where's your parachute?
I think he might be here, or, I mean, I staggered the times, I didn't tell them all to be here at seven thirty, I staggered, but he should, he's probably outside, because I think his time is fifteen.
We better go ahead and do the chief before it falls, before it falls. Well, I've, I've listened to what was going on with the park, so, I understand where we're at, um.
Well, Sam, I've got a couple of questions about last year.
Oh, okay.
And we just nicked one guy, nicked one guy to come to Dallas and save our city. Why did we buy ten pair of white gloves and ten white ties?
Oh, the tie's black, I don't quite-
I don't make any difference, it's, it's gloves and ties.
Their perfume, police gear.
I see we spent a thousand dollars for ammunition.
I mean, that's, that's the tip of the iceberg, we should, we need a lot of ammunition.
You boy spent that much money, I'll build a, best of bottle cap, a hundred and fifty yards.
But, yeah, I mean, we, we, we have to have a lot of ammunition.
Where do you shoot? Who do you practice?
Well, the range, uh, I think there's different places, uh, out here at, uh, the bossy's got Craig Alderman, he's got a range out here, it's like, it's like, uh.
Of course, the machine guns are still a corner of my side, as you can imagine.
Yeah, we have a front, that's, that's, that's a lot of them, right before.
Did we have it converted over?
Yeah.
Well, I noticed that there's a bill here.
Yeah, for selection.
You know, I still think those, you know, as far as shotguns and everything else, I don't care if they're carried in car, but I think those machine guns should be kept at the police station locked up.
Well, then, I presume that anymore.
Well, what'd you do to them?
I put selector switches on it, the automatic fires completely removed.
Well.
I had it, I had it because I had to keep components for it, but you can go up here and buy an automatic rifle and that, you can have it automatic.
I know.
Convert automatic.
I know, but they're not my responsibility, those machine guns in the city of Buffalo are our responsibility.
But they're not machine guns anymore.
They're semi-automatic rifles.
They've, they've been converted.
I understand, but I still don't think that the rifles, uh, should be in the dark.
They're, they're not, are they?
Well, by getting, uh, rights, I mean, because if we get a call to school, act of fear, then it's something that time to go back to the police department, it's a lot of stuff.
Who do you think the sheriff and your SWAT team are gonna do?
Well, Jess, I don't have any problems with rifles on cars, we have pickup trucks, the park, the courthouse, they have a gun, rifle on those.
Yeah, also, a lot of pride for some of them.
I mean, everybody gets served by a, just like a handgun, it's no different than a handgun, but you need to, to use, you need to avail them, you know? You don't wanna have to have a rifle, you can't fire somebody a hundred yards away, down a hall, a school hallway.
Now, raising the bar, Sam, you're the highest budgeted department of town, it costs more money to operate your department than any other department that we've got, and it just-
Yeah, we're basis protection, I can talk.
You don't wanna go there with me, because I can drive around town, and it's a joke, you're not having struggles before, and still, some of the things still have not changed. I know you don't think you're supposed to enforce the ordinance of the city of Buffalo, I do, we've got a difference of opinion there.
No, I think we need to enforce them, I can only, I can only do what I can do, let me ask you this, uh, gives the K-nine unit a duplication with county having the K-nine unit, I mean, how often, how often do they count, do they call out? I can't, I put in the county cover, a city, I mean-
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to call them out and call them.
How often, how, how often in the last twelve months have you called out the K-nine unit?
Well, ours is on duty often, I think.
So, how often have you actually used them?
Well, most of the time, it's on, each time the car's off, and then the car, the car.
You bring the dog out?
You can see it, it smells of fish.
I mean, once a week?
Oh, I've tried that a few times, I guess.
Sam, you're under budget on everything.
I've cut back quite a bit, honestly.
Like, looking at our budget here, the only thing you're over budget on is equipment, repairs, maintenance.
One thing I want to pass this out here, just so you're aware, and this is something that's gonna be increased next year, get the training budget. Because most people I have on, they've just went to the academy, so I haven't had to do the training, so, generally, it's about two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollars an officer for a class. Right now, I'm teaching this class, it's, I'm saying, it's about twenty-five hundred dollars an officer per year, I make the training, but, but saving the city, because I've done a training myself, so.
What about the county or their training, are we enrolled in that, save us money?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a contract that I mentioned to the mayor, that shines, it's five hundred dollars per year. I, I have a bit of it, I, I'll talk to you. This here is just kind of a basic to show you the training that's necessary annually, and then there, it'll tell you every three years, and this is just a breakdown, and, uh, after this year, we're gonna have to really emphasize this training, so, five thousand dollars for the whole department, which includes the ammunition and everything, it's not very much money, and, uh, if you're seeing my training budget, it'll spend probably about three thousand.
Yeah, you're, you're certified in new training, right?
Well, I do most of it, you know, I think, I'm like, I used to do stuff like that, but I, I can still instruct a whole lot of students.
And, but you're a certified instructor, you've got the papers.
Yeah, I'm firearms instructor, uh, asked, uh, several names, uh, Taser, uh, there's some things that I'm not sure about, a bunch of dry, and I just send that out. But we had a guy come here and did that.
I guess I, I look at, maybe I'll stint here, but I'm looking at the wish list, I call it wishlist, and it comes to ninety-six thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars, so, I, yeah, to me, it's long and short, that's it.
Well, the things that I'm really, like I say, I, I know we're cutting back, and things that I'm really, really looking at.
The long and short of the whole thing is, I'm saying, I don't see-
The long and short of the whole thing is, I'm saying, I don't see how the budget's gonna be enough bigger this year for every department to get everything they want. I mean, ninety six thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars.
That's what I'm saying, I've got, I've got this cut back quite a bit. At least I put these on here just to cover myself. It's cause if I get in a position where I have an emergency, and I don't have a generator, I had it on my wishlist, so I'm covered.
I'll tell you what, Sam, I marked, I marked that off. If you get in that trouble, call me, I'll bring you mine.
Okay.
What's the microfilm records?
We don't, we have never had any microfilm, uh, many of the police records.
Where are they stored?
Uh, they're on, on, on a disk, I guess. They're all on a disk, aren't they?
The ones we have up here are out in storage building.
But most of them, our, they're all paper records.
You lost me, Sam.
Well.
You've got yours down at the police office department on paper, but Debbie has a copy of them here, is that right? Microfilm?
Not microfilm, just on computer. And by federal law, here three years ago, they had no microfilm. They couldn't reach the computer. I don't know if they've ever changed that, no. If we have a fire at the state police department, our records are all gone. That's the reason I put that on there.
Well, what's his twenty five thousand dollars included? I mean, what, what?
Film, you have to go through photographing, taking the record.
I know, is that for someone to come in and do it?
Yeah.
Why don't you scan them and then save?
That's what it does, it scans them. It's just like a feeder. You feed them, I had to do it with a public years ago.
You're not microfilming, you're, you're scanning them.
You're scanning them on the microfilm.
You don't microfilm them.
Yeah, but you don't need to use microfilm. You ought to scan your records onto a disk.
Yeah, see, I, I'd have to check it in, but when I did with public, you could not have a computer watch. You had to pay on microfilm.
If you make backups, you keep them all safe?
Yeah, you have to, you have to have it on microfilm.
That's federal government?
Yeah.
Not surprised.
Federal law, I'm not to check them again, but the last I checked, it was still that way, that last year, so I need to check and see. What's the train?
Yeah, cause that makes absolutely no sense. Cause the disk is permanent, you can make it many of those if you want to.
And, uh, well, if we could do that, I don't know what it costs to do. But we need to have people, we need, we need to have that.
You can find out?
Yeah.
Cause that.
Cause I actually think that they do.
That'd be a piece of cake to scan those records, put them on your computer and then back them up on a disk and leave them in city hall.
I mean, well, we need to do it, cause honestly, well, no, I think that's a question of, because they don't have a warrant system, aren't they?
Anyway, I got one question. It says necessary training guidelines. Who's guideline?
That's from a liability insurance company.
Jess.
The risk management.
Wes.
That's recommended, not mandatory. The audio cameras, the six cars?
Well, yeah, what I, what I'd like to do, I'm trying to cut back here, I'd like to get four, uh, of the video audio cameras for cars. Four of the, uh, rock and roll. And consideration on the, uh, the used police K nine car. That's my, that's my three things.
What's the difference, what's the difference between a used K nine vehicle and a vehicle you're, you're presently using?
We have the K nine unit.
What would you do with the car that you're presently using for this operation?
For now?
Yeah.
We just sell it. Cause it's not gonna make it another year.
It's about, I mean, that'd be bad.
It was topped up a minute, but, but the women just didn't make it as far as the.
It's about shot.
And the K nine, the K nine unit, yes, we built that with, it's not K nine unit.
Well, I, I, I know. Why, is, is, is there any grant or in kind money from the federal government, from the loan person, available to the city of Buffalo? For grants for vehicles, for wireless radios?
No, the only thing home that's true, that one thing's available, is the ball.
Well, if our departments can get grants, it looks to me like it's, it's important, you know, police departments, do you forget? If they're gonna mandate.
Which is not available.
You know, if the federal government's gonna mandate all of this, they're supposed to have funds for some of this.
That's, that's part of the lawsuit, isn't it?
Springfield sued, you know, they've sued the state EPA. Then, uh, law of Springfield, because they mandated updates, but they're not funded. So they have them in Missouri State Court saying you cannot mandate a municipality without funding. You cannot break them.
Should I join in?
Well, since they're doing it, they've got, well, we're gonna reap the benefits from it.
That sounds good.
You know, no, I don't think we ought to join, but I think we need to watch it, because, you know, and they're right. EPA and all these, they, they mandate all of this to us, but in doing it, they keep us on a limited budget for use of our monies for the benefit of our people. And so that's what that lawsuit's about, that they cannot do that. We hope they have, I hope they get it, and get off everybody's back.
I'll tell you what I, I'd like to do is, on the K nine unit, we just go to another vehicle. And we, we'll just build our own K nine, cause I, I looked for a dog from prior, about nineteen years.
Trying to life.
Retired. You only get, yeah, you only get your life out of one in about seven years. And he's six right now, but he's a good girl. I'd, I'd say he may make it till seventy after he's old.
What are you gonna do in an episode?
Do what?
What are you gonna do when the dog dies?
Well, we convert it back to patrol car.
Well, I mean, if you're, are you looking to replace the, uh, drug dog in, in the future?
Well, if it's gonna, if it's gonna cost more money right now, we need to cut. It's a keeper, we need to cut funds. Cause I still have to train him, just like my officer already. I have to send him out and train, I can't train himself.
Well, I thought that's what we asked. I thought Wayne asked, do we really need the dog? Can't we work with the town?
Well, he's got, I mean, he's got the dog.
Well, I understand, but if he's, if he's getting old.
Well, he's not old, he's not old and old. I'd say here a couple of years, his life will probably be about that, a couple of years. So I say if you get, if you get another car, if you make it, uh, work, if something did happen, convert it back to patrol car.
What's your status on the, uh, empower, upon recall? What have you done with that vehicle?
I take it up Wednesday morning. I take it up Wednesday morning.
For them to make the repairs on it?
Is that the suspension?
Yeah, it's not.
Now, what kind of, what, how many vehicles we buy this year? Three?
Two.
What kind of shit were they, the last two we bought?
Right now, a good shirt. You mean, the ones we just bought?
Mm-hmm. So how many?
One, I take the transmission.
So how many vehicles do you have, rolling, rolling vehicles ready to go right now?
Right now, four.
How many you got parked? Now, we own more than four vehicles.
Yeah, we have five. That plane, plane bar, the one I, I drive around next to, and then they drive, they drive it and I have another right down.
Okay, so you have five police cars.
Mm-hmm.
Can you now draw them, or that I've used?
Two's in the queue, yeah. Yeah, that's six, a pension in the queue, I don't know how long.
Well, we know what, we know what Lee's gun, it's transportation. It's the only thing that's got, gives doors on it. So, and you've got six officers?
Yeah.
Does that include yourself?
Yeah.
Well, it's a pretty wish list, which we can give it to.
Oh, yeah, I do too. But I'm staying in the situation, I could be, I have to say, if I can build it, uh, four hot racks and, uh, four audio cameras. And another place vehicle, needs to be.
Sam, can these, uh, well, you know, that's one thing, because you've asked for six, six car videos and we've only got five.
Oh, he's deep in that.
They can be taken in and out, can't they?
Well, you can't.
You can't take the video?
They're from a, from a, so.
Are there any used audio cameras around?
These are probably used.
There are almost three thousand more of these used?
Six thousand of them.
Go steal some.
Yeah, those are high dollar cameras, but.
Exactly, when you get pulled over and I have to set the highway patrol car, I'll wait until the control is not looking.
It's probably. Well, I, you know, do we really need that type of cameras for?
Well, they're a kind of thing, but.
They're a pain.
When you go toward, the defense attorney is entitled to.
Yeah, the discovery, they don't want all the kind of.
And if that system doesn't work any better than that idiot system that the highway patrol has got, uh, that's a big respect to nothing.
No, hey, these are, these are good cameras here.
But, but I.
Sometimes the need to know is what we need to know, right?
I think, I think the camera, camera, like Wayne's, it's better not know.
That's what I'm saying. It just seems seventeen thousand dollars not to know, maybe better off than seventeen thousand dollars.
I, I agree with that. It, it creates more of an administrative headache. I had a DWI case in Met County that I got dismissed because the state failed to disclose the, what was on the camera for the defense. And I asked that, that, that all the evidence that would have been caught on a camera be excluded. The judge sustained my, my motion and, uh, and, uh, the officer could essentially say, I pulled the car over. That was it.
The only purpose I can see, for one, is there is a measure of protection for the officer if there's a claim of abuse. Although, from looking at TV, most of the time, the cameras are nailing the officer.
Yeah, most of the time. Uh, these weapons containment for twenty five hundred, Sam?
Uh, that's, that's the station, but like I say, I'm, I'm just looking at things.
That you'd like to have?
Well, the top four, we had to cut back. I'm just looking at the top, actually, not the shotgun rack, but, you know, the lock rack, the cameras.
In other words, you really need, are those, are those vehicles are just floating around in the trunks, aren't they?
That's what?
They're vehicles, they're, most of those weapons are just laying around in the trunk. They're not locked either.
They're in cases.
But if I pop the trunk, I can steal the gun.
Oh, sure.
Okay. And this would keep you from stealing the guns.
Well, if you want it bad enough, I'd say.
No, but I, I mean, I can pop the trunk a lot easier than pop the lock.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, these, these are made, these are made to.
Well, I don't have enough trouble with those, especially since the guns are no longer machine guns. I did have a problem with machine guns. Well, I guess you just do what you gotta do, Sam, try to cut your budget as much as you can.
Like I say, I'm trying to frame all I can. The training is a huge expense. It's a big expense.
What's the actual statutory requirement for training, after the hundred?
Well, most of the weapons you're supposed to certify each year. And, uh, what they'll do is, that's one thing's a lot of toward, if you've got a piece of defense attorney, they'll ask you. Well, when your certification expires, it expires.
Now, Sam, are we in a situation with Nina resigning? Are we gonna be in a situation for a lot of overtime if we don't get her replaced for any reason, and then let's get somebody hired at overtime?
I think we, we only hired the last one. We had one of the three, and our two of the three. Looking at this one, but I'm still taking that face, they got anything to put in the morning, but they're all recruits right out of the academy. And this one, um, I'm finally opening my, I just wanna say, I would like, I would like to bring, bring somebody to counsel.
Well, I know, I hate to play overtime.
Yeah, I'm afraid of that.
Because of being shorthanded, I don't mind playing overtime if it's good.
Are being, being, being as I started tomorrow?
Is tomorrow. You've got some on you now?
Uh, of all the advocates, are there anyone that, is, is there anyone that's local?
Uh, Jeremy being.
Is he local?
Yeah, well, he's a lone, lone one.
Oh, okay.
Do you?
We hired, we hired only two locals.
Do we need a female officer?
Hope we have one. That, that would be good. I don't have a problem with it.
Well, I wasn't wanting to ask. I said, do we need one?
No, no.
They don't have to have one at all?
No, they don't have to have one. As long as you, as long as you golfers, you can come and see us.
Well. I don't think that you're gonna get your wish list.
Oh, no. I wouldn't.
We're looking, and we're all, I mean, we're looking at things, Sam.
Man, I think, well.
Quick question for you in the budget. What, what do you have in there that we can currently cut?
You said everything's up, top four items?
Oh, boy. Well, we're talking about the, you're talking about the regular budget, not the.
Not, not the wishlist, the, the, the regular budget.
That's a good question, too, right?
I mean, right now, we're under budget for a lot of things, whi- which is certainly good.
I think, I think the, I think the training and the supplies, maybe stay pretty well same, but those others that was under. I'll try my best to try to, to try to work with that. I just, I don't know what's gonna come up, that's the thing. I can hope for the best and then, and I want to go and have something to lay out.
Vehicle maintenance, we have proposed twenty thousand. This last year, as of July twenty fourth, we've only spent fourteen thousand. Uh, do you foresee that going down because of the addition of two new vehicles?
I think it will.
So we could possibly slash that twenty thousand to maybe ten thousand.
If, if we get another car?
You've used, you've used eleven thousand in fuel, so I wouldn't go that low.
Is, is that under maintenance?
That's fuel.
Fuel is under vehicle maintenance.
Yeah. So that, that's a big portion of it.
Yeah, we're gonna take some bets.
And if we don't, if we don't, if I don't do something to that K nine car, I'm afraid we're gonna make spend that.
So I see. No, I, I see our phone bill is, uh, I know some of it's for a computer. It runs, uh, four thousand dollars, something like that. Why is it a procedure that an individual can't call the police department and talk to you that everything's referred to 911?
Well, they call 911.
Now, that wasn't what I asked you. You know, it's, it's almost like we've got a police department with an unlisted number. I mean, I've had more complaints about people saying we can't call the police. We understand emergencies are emergencies. If somebody, if there's blood and guts someplace, it's an emergency.
If they call two seven oh nine, they come to the police department.
Well.
The 911 goes to the.
I, I think that, uh, no, these people called.
The police department.
They didn't call 911, and they were referred to the 911, and they weren't emergency situations.
The only time they refer to 911 is if they need a car dispatch.
Well, let me ask you that. If it's not an emergency and somebody, and. Well, let me ask you that, if it's not an emergency and somebody, and, uh, they're, they, people don't understand, they've got problems and they wanna talk to a police officer, does that go through nine-one-one if a car is dispatched?
I've talked to a lot of people who've called it.
Well, that's not what I get, Sam, it's not only you, it's everybody in the department down there, but it's, they call and they get bounced to nine-one-one. They say, you'll have to call nine-one-one, they'll have to refer the caller to us.
That's just dispatch car, if it gets a person down in the field, they call and we'll ask them what, 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 you know, what they need. And they say something, well, I have somebody over here that looks suspicious, they call nine-one-one, they'll dispatch a car by, by the way. Literally one makes the item cards on it, they're the one that makes an initial card for them to make reports on it.
Well, I had an individual that had a robbery, had some stuff stolen, and called the police department and they said, you'll have to call nine-one-one before we can come investigate.
They, they make an item card on it, in other words, they.
You know, I don't care, I'm sorry. Down here, a local person calls for a police officer to come investigate a claim, why do they have to go down there for them to disperse you? When you could, when somebody at the office could have said, I'll be out and investigate your claim?
Does they have to make an initial card?
Who says they have to make an initial?
This, that's our procedure, for example, for example, if you call and say, my house is burglarized, uh, as opposed to if your neighbor calls, they need to know whether or not to dispatch Buffalo PD if it's inside the city, or a sheriff which, uh, would respond to a call outside of the city. These are, these are their procedures and protocols we may not always agree with.
No, I don't agree with it because I know there have been instances of small thefts that our officers never investigate, they call it in.
And it might have went to the county.
Local merchants that have called the police department because of small thefts, and the police department in Buffalo says, you'll have to call nine-one-one, they called nine-one-one and nobody came to investigate the claim.
I don't understand it.
Well, I don't either, and that's the reason I'm asking you because.
Yeah, no, I, I, this far, stop early.
Well, I've had two or three people on the same situation, Sam.
I, I did.
But this, we don't, we're not responding to the people. And a little problem with not responding to the taxpayers and.
Don't understand it, because if they, if they dispatch, they go, maybe they're not dispatching, I don't know what to do.
Well, I don't either, you know, it's, it's kinda like.
I'll call your wife and want to.
Well, I, you know, I, I think regardless of what it is, it needs to be dispatched. It needs a live officer on the scene regardless of, don't fill out a paper. There's no reason for a town of three thousand that someone calls in for a burglary and tell them to fill out the paper to send it in. That doesn't fly, you know, we've got the old.
You gotta know what to respond to. Is the weapons involved, they've got to have, they've had the protocol down here and what to ask this person when you call me.
The only, the only problem with calling nine-one-one is by the time you get done answering all their stupid questions.
You don't want anybody.
The burglar is gonna be out of state anyway.
Well, nine-one-one is the clearinghouse for taking calls. If you need a police officer dispatched right now, you can call twenty-seven oh nine, Lisa's not there to answer the phone. Uh, dispatch is something that's a nine-one-one function. Uh, if you call up during normal business hours and talk to Lisa and say, hey, can you send an officer out? Uh, she's gonna tell you to call nine-one-one because that's the clearinghouse, they can determine, uh, what needs are met. Does, does there need to be a fire truck, is there an ambulance that's necessary? I mean, those are normal operating procedures that are common, not just to Dallas County, but, uh, Green County, Springfield, Missouri, uh, Los Angeles County. Anywhere you go, there's that clearinghouse, there's that litany of unnecessary questions that they ask. Uh, does that make it a perfect system?
No.
No.
Just a, just a question, why would you need a phone at the police station?
For internet.
Because they don't answer calls. I mean, that's, as, as someone sitting back here, that's kinda where it's coming, if you call two seven oh one or whatever it is, they're always gonna say, call nine-one-one, is that always what happens?
No, no, it's, it's just if they've got an emergency call.
Oh, okay.
If they call in and say, uh, they've got a, they wanna talk to an officer about a complaint or something. We don't care to talk to them and everything, it's just, it's just that it's.
So, it's best not to call in with an emergency, it's best to call and say, I need to speak with an officer, so, I mean, if you make that, you know.
For, for example, Tony Kinzer may pick up the phone and say, uh, dial the number and say, yeah, I'm calling for Rita, she was a witness, uh, can you give me a call back at twenty-seven oh nine? Rita may call back and say, I didn't witness anyone hit anyone that day. And Tony may say, can you come to the police station, we'd like to conduct an interview, and that's.
You asked me on Kinzer and Rita, I don't, that, that.
Somebody may call in and say, there's a dog, large.
So, basically, we're just talking, emergency things have to go through there.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's just good for citizens to know, because I didn't know.
Just so they know how to dispatch it, you know.
Yes. Is Archie in nine-one-one, I'm gonna ask him something because who makes the decision to this, to have a wrecker come to wreck? Two cars wrecked out here, we investigate the accident, who calls for a wrecker? Nine-one-one?
No, uh, we ask the people who they want. And if they don't have a preference, then we just mention that.
Well, you know, I've got a young man around here that's been in the business for several years and he says that they won't disperse him. They will not disperse anybody except AJ's. And they won't call Wade, now, I, I don't understand if you have two, two businesses that are, that are taxpayers within the city of Buffalo, they have licenses, why it's not on a rotating basis? It's supposed to be.
We do remain a machine, one side Wade, one side AJ, then it's a company.
Sam, I wouldn't argue with you, but it just, it just doesn't work ninety percent that they'll call AJ and only ten percent that they call Wade, that just doesn't balance with me.
Well, a lot of them will call AJ because it's convenient for them right here in town if they, that, that's the only answer I have, I don't know. I don't, I mean, I, I don't, you have people who'd call.
Well, it's, there's something, because I know over the years, for too many years, he doesn't get to call. Ninety-ten is not an equal business. It's just not fair.
I hear the same thought.
I mean, everybody here, we've all heard the same thing, that it's ninety-ten and we don't know who to blame, I wanna blame somebody. Because I feel like there's somebody at fault, it can't be that, that people that come in, that two cars wrecked and both of these guys are from Canada, that they're gonna pit AJ at a time because they know where he's at. See, that just don't balance with this whole thing, so.
He is alphabetically higher up.
I was gonna say that, but.
Well, alphabetically, well, we just got to say, and you got a sheet, you've got the name on both sides.
It's laminated and it's in the car. There's a reason being we have a meeting, the county's kind of, Dallas County Commission, because they have complaints about it.
Yeah, it's complaints, I know what's gonna happen next.
So, I don't know what the, I don't know what the sheriff's department, but that's what.
Over what?
That's what I've, uh.
Do you have to be here?
All right, move to the one.
I don't think it's, I mean.
Sam, is there anything that you can, you can cut out of our budget? Debbie's done a pretty good job with the proposed disclaimer, dusting everything down where there is a, uh, a lesser of a percentage that, that's spent. Does, does anyone have any other budget related questions, uh, for our chief of police?
Are we running more, uh, more radar, Sam?
I don't think we're running one, no one. No, I, I brought one of my radar units down there for the city to use, just to help out, so we didn't have what I don't want.
Well, don't be used, I was saying, more of us have to.
We need, we need all.
Well, we don't want a bad reputation.
No, no.
We do not want a bad.
But we need revenue, I don't know where to find it.
Can we ask you about, uh, how you calibrated that?
How the radar unit?
Yeah, the one you brought. Not Alexander Graham Bell?
Oh, no, no, this is a, this is not easy.
I'm just easy. Can, can the chief be excused?
Yes, yes.
And can our city attorney be excused?
Yes.
Because I can see.
I hope you're not charging, see, we're getting charged, why don't you go back here?
I can tell you, I wrote down my time here, but unless you all need me, I'm gonna cut out of here. Because I can see that my services are not needed for this portion of the meeting unless you all want me here.
I've really got your budget approved for our city attorney. You already got your budget approved.
City fines.
Is there a minute? I don't know if it's feasible or not. Would we get charged for sentry tail for that line for every computer?
No, you just get charged for the lines that you have run into each building.
Thanks a lot.
Well.
Mr. Higgins, Chief Higgins, police guy.
There's no way that we can find all those, all those sentry tails in the line?
Well, they charge you per, per line going into each building. Martha actually has all the long distance in a combined group to try to save money. But the, as far as the line charges going into each building, they charge you a flat thirty-three dollars, I think, I don't know the exact figure, to go for each line.
Just like eleven miles down here at the police department, it was, it was, uh.
They have like three or four lines that they pay for.
And see, that's two thousand ninety dollars and that's just one building.
Well, I think they have to pay one line that goes in down to dispatch, if I remember correctly.
For nine, for a sentry tail?
It's either going into dispatch or it's going into the sheriff's department. But we pay for one line that goes into somebody else's building, I'm pretty sure.
So, it can't be, that's not a, I don't think it can be combined and save some money.
No, because they charge you by line, I mean, we've combined everything that we can as far as like long distance grouping and all that. But you, the only way to save money is to cut some phone lines out. So, we could tell Sam he can, he can't have, I mean, Sam has a fax machine, Eric has a fax machine, those are both a full line charge in each of those buildings, I mean.
Eric, do you get a lot of faxes?
I have a ton of them called. But I'm trying to cut that back, I'm trying to get this email system, uh, uh, faxes maybe.
Well, we have, we have Verizon, that, I guess, is, is that the mobile phones, is that the cell phones, Verizon cell phones?
We're required to have two lines per ISO down in part, which, I'll do this for us, so.
Anything in your budget you can cut?
Uh. This line material, should we put it back to three hundred and five hundred, I guess we can, we can go three thousand on that. Travel meetings and news, we get it at a thousand, last, last year she put fifteen, so we don't go over, that's all our means to do, we can put that twelve hundred because it shouldn't change from that.
Eric, what do you use propane and electricity for besides, uh, heating and air conditioning?
Propane is nothing but heat.
Do what?
You got those big coops down there, right?
Yeah, the, the heat is mainly for our base so that our pumps don't freeze on trucks, so. But if we could insul- uh, if we could insulate that building somehow in there, we would save three thousand dollars a year in propane.
That seems like an awful lot of money.
It just all goes out the brick in those nineteen twenties windows that are, that are metal framed and, uh.
Where can't we, why can't we place it now, which you don't need there?
Oh, there isn't any.
Can't they be enclosed?
Yeah, it can be enclosed, but the brick is what sucks a lot of the, the heat out. The windows are a minute problem compared to that brick.
Why don't, uh?
If we were to take and insulate that and we just cover up the windows, we can fix that all, no problem.
That's what I'm saying, why couldn't, why can't we panel and insulate the interior of that building with the, beside, once, some type of washable material? So that we can wash it out.
Eric, why don't you talk to Mike, Chief, and Jim and see if they're viable or permanent?
Yeah, we, we really need to be insulated, we would have a ton of heat down in that way, I mean.
What's the temperature that that back end with the trucks are, you don't have to keep that to seventy?
Nope, nope, no, it stays at the lowest setting as long as it kicks on, and I think that is at sixty-two, makes the, is the lowest on the switch. And it sets on that and that's what, when it kicks on, is what they're like.
Why don't you see if that, get that thing insulated now? Is yours insulated, Jim, down at, uh, rural, is your building insulated?
Not very much, a little bit.
What's your, what's, what does your propane bill run down there? Now, that's just the one truck pay and.
Down there? Yeah, yeah, we, we got, there's three bays to us.
Oh, three bays?
And we could probably buy a thermostat switch.
Sixteen hundred dollars, something like that, I don't know about that available. Sixteen hundred, you don't think?
Well, that, that old heater that's in that bay was a whole more than my functions with this.
I'm sure it would.
I don't, I, I don't remember propane when I, when I.
It may, but I don't know. Do what?
I don't, I don't remember what our, I don't remember.
Propane keeps me alive, and I, every time during the winter I see it on the monthly bill, just.
Why don't you get us a head swivel across the insulated thing, I mean, if we, maybe I'll be insulated.
Is the ceiling insulated?
Is what?
Ceiling insulated?
Yes, the ceiling in the bay is insulated.
I don't, or I see that, maybe I see me that down.
Yeah, the ceiling is insulated.
Sort of got it in a head, against the ceiling, please. Yeah, I would have thought that car rose a few times.
I mean, really, we're in a new station, but.
Here's why. Of course, nothing that we would do.
I say that, I'm not sure. Yeah, it's, uh, that old mouse, that's what it is, that had the old, rest of that looks, or not.
So, it's loaded? It's a face part?
Well, if we were just, you know, channel out the gold.
What's your, what's your, that, 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 that?
Well, it used to be the street department, the police department and.
When I was your chief, it was, I'll just make sure I see in your life.
I'm trying to fix it up to where it looks at. I finally haven't got any more complaints about the cargo when you walk hard, just to be timed, but.
Were your trucks set, the trucks are set in that play park, the back hole, and they were playing, they were playing, they were there half day, we like, never got out of there.
We got the, the extra flat top bay in front of there, so they, they move fast and free now.
What do you gotta have out this wish for this? You're not gonna get a paid for, so, that's, that's not even considered. What else have you gotta have to operate this thing?
I need the SCBA cylinders or we're, it is, if we put the SCBA cylinders off every, I don't know, three years, they're all up. So, instead of buying eight of them and one, you know, swipe, it's easier to, you know, take, might as well buy two one year, two one year, two one year, two than that.
You just need four sections of hose?
Yeah.
We said, we're getting four bad sections.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that replaces the four that blew, that hose testing and puts them back, you know.
For four hose gives for a rack?
No, no, probably well hoses gives for a new rack, but. I mean, I'm, I'm good with what I've got, I just need to replace the four that I've got because our combat hose on fifty-two, I mean, fifty-one is, uh, is, our main line on fifty-one is what's getting pretty old and I need to, need it replaced and put what's up there into the backup.
These life packs?
A life pack is the AED, our AED is out of, out of, I mean, it still works, um, but we can't buy a parts for it no more. And when the battery goes on it, it expires out, this coming up, May, March or June.
Tell me, tell, tell me what the life pack is.
It's an AED, it's a automatic external controller, it's what shocks somebody when they're having a heart attack.
Oh, okay.
It restarts your heart.
Oh, okay, well, God, what else is there? You're next.
Well, the thermal imaging camera.
Let me ask you this, that's a twenty-three hundred dollar item.
That's a cheap as well, except for one time use only.
Is this to be part of the first responders or is this part of the party?
That's our matter. That's our medical side of the fire department, yeah.
So this is the first responders?
Right.
Are they there?
I mean, it's not, no, no, but, I mean, I don't, I don't see, I, I guess I need to ask you what you're meaning by first responders. We don't, I mean, we have first responder, but that is a medical certification.
Okay, what I'm trying to say is why does the fire department need it if the first responders have these available? Because they're on the scene quicker than you are.
We are the first responders.
We're back to question one, that's what I asked.
I mean, you know what I mean?
Are you, does only, does the first responder, is this?
I guess you're segregating the fire department.
No, I'm putting one on one. You're saying that you're, that you are first responders, that you've got the ambulances. That your boys go to any wreck before the ambulances get there.
That's correct.
Okay, so you're first responders?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, you do not have a life pack now?
We do have a life pack. It is nine years old. When the battery expires out of this next year, we will not have them. It'll be done. We can't, you cannot buy parts for our old life pack that we have.
So don't call you if I'm having a heart attack. Or because it won't work.
It may not after, it may not after.
Dial the operator and ask him for the Polk County nine-one-one.
Well, yeah, yeah, well, I'm just trying.
We hope the boys, we hope the boys with the ambulance are in there.
Now, are your boys qualified to handle this item?
Oh, yeah, they, they can be firefighters without, yeah.
And this item will expire?
The one we've got, if the battery expires next year.
Next year?
Next year, and it's like March or, it's either March or June.
Thirteen.
Of thirteen. And that's if it doesn't go dead before.
What can you help, what can you cut out of your present budget to help pay for those?
I don't know, I can use that going down, that's about as far as I can go without it. I try not to go over on my bill. And that's about as far without, using no way of going over.
We're at, uh, overall ninety percent right now.
We're pretty strange on that. I wrote a grant for four fires, so hopefully it'll do us.
Well, you're not gonna be, next year, you're not gonna be buying the pagers, are you? Are you gonna?
Uh, let me, I have to think on, no, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be even on the pagers. I believe I've cycled, the old one was out since we went to narrow banding, so I believe I'm okay, I don't think I have any old ones.
Okay, what did you?
I didn't think you had any of them. Now, if we, if we put on more firemen, then that'd be a different story, but.
What about your Kinko radios?
No, we're good with radios, unless they're loose.
There's, there's two thousand dollars there that you spent last year that you won't have to spend this year?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out where to pay for some of the trash and stuff.
Yeah.
The capital expenditures on, on the budget, the thirteen oh thirty-six, those for the new vehicle, correct?
Vehicle, the, the rate, the pay. The direct majors are the pagers and the radios. Yeah. Right? Yeah, yeah.
So there's three, five on graphics that you, so. Of the items?
I shouldn't have to spend, let's see here, I shouldn't have to spend the whole back page that I've got. Um, the storm sirens, that, we have one, I think it's gonna have to be fixed again, so, but that's, that's a different story, uh.
No, I mean, that's not a real story, have you got, have we got a sirens that are down?
We have one that I think the lady called me the other day and said that they didn't spend when they, when they sent it. But I went down there and punched the button and it, it spun just fine, but if it's only sporadic, I'm gonna have to wait until they either do a storm siren check and go down there and physically watch it.
Those crazy things work in, in operation, I don't wanna find out after the fact if they don't work.
So, but if I start, if I start, I can only set sirens off once, once a month, if I start setting them off every day, people are gonna start flipping out.
That wing get mad throwing something. No, I mean, those things have gotta be in operation if they have to worry with the cost, but.
So, and then, uh, let's see here, the helmets, that should be cut if we get, when we get the money for the grant for the.
Have we all got that money?
Still waiting through paperwork, I sent something to Travis today that he's gonna have to fill out.
Did they ever call us and tell us that we got the grant?
Nope, we're still waiting through paperwork.
For our closing, we had to have our closing on, is that what we're doing?
Yeah, Travis is trying to get the closing opinion put together.
See, I don't know what's gonna break or what else is gonna come up, but, you know.
I don't know.
And I've got, I've got all the equipment, all the equipment suspended. My biggest deal is, uh, I wanna talk about in a couple of years, fifty-two, if we don't start trying to make arrangements or planning for that and everything, that thing. Cause we're already behind our. I've wrote, I've wrote, wrote and wrote, I'm trying.
Agriculture grant bought our last one, right?
Yeah, and I called USDA for that, I called USDA for the fire sta- the new fire station, Travis. I called all the time. I ain't gonna let it go to the president.
I know we'd like to have a new one, can we get a good use of it?
We can get a used one, but we're still, regardless, we're still, six years ago, we were five hundred gallons shy of meeting the fire code for ISO. We built, I don't know how many houses in town, and we built two FEMA shelters. Oryl is expanded, so there's, when ISO comes back in here, we may be fifteen hundred gallons under, so, um.
What's a new truck?
Huh?
What is a new truck, how much?
Well, they had one for sixty thousand, and then Fairedrow bought it the other day, one down Firemaster, that's a used truck. A new truck costs about a hundred and ninety-five thousand. But they get refurbished trucks down at Firemaster all the time. And they had a nice one down there, hopefully, I don't know, Fairedrow bought it, and I, it was only sixty thousand.
Now, the yellow ones are, but, but they're cheaper, aren't they?
We'll talk to Franklin, y'all, the bay run there is right.
If you buy your new one, would you not take it out of town?
The new one? No, I would not take that one out of town because I could take the other one out of town. I try my best to leave fifty-one in town. I know that on the grant, it was roped from mutual aid for the county, but that's how we got it, but. I try to keep it inside the city. And the rent's locked up on fifty-two on Kenny the other day, so.
Well, you know, we gotta have a, we gotta have a new truck, just have a better paid partner.
Oh, well, I would do it. I'd buy thirty more volunteers if I could, you know, do it. But, I mean, obviously, you gotta have the equipment before you can main it, but I understand that, but. We gotta be ready.
So you definitely need the cylinders, the life pack, and the hose?
The cylinders, we are okay on for three years. But, every year we put it on is another year that we're gonna have to add to the next total, so I'd rather.
We, we have how many?
We have eight bottles.
And you're wanting to replace two of them?
Two of them, because they all expire in three years. And the way they expire, if I buy two this year, two next year, two the year after, then I can make it the next six months on the fourth of the year with the two that have.
Every year we'll have a rolling obligation to buy two instead of getting kicked and having to buy eight of them.
Yeah, I don't know why they bought eight of them all at once.
I'd imagine, cause they had no other choice.
And that, that, that possibly.
That's probably what happened.
Buy all of them eight at one time?
Well, if you buy them now, they're going to expire two years quicker than they would.
Yeah, but regardless, they all, regardless of when you buy them, they all only have, they only have five year, or not five year shelf, eight year shelf.
Maybe it makes more sense just to, you give this new warning, wait, you buy more.
Can you, would you, would you put all, how many you said we have?
We have eight.
Would you put all eight on and go inside of a building today?
Would I put all, oh, yeah.
Okay, then, I'm not worried about that. That's when you tell me that you won't put.
I just don't like spending.
I really think it's a good, I get it, buy two at a time and stagger it out, I mean.
Cause if we're sitting in a sinkhole situation in three years and we like, and we're out for packs because I'm not, I can't put.
Well, it's a show how much money we've got.
I'm trying to cut, you're trying, I'm not being a spender.
I say, we don't know how much we put this all together.
Oh, well, I don't, yeah, yeah.
And if we had, if we got the extra twenty-one hundred dollars, I don't care to spend it, but if we don't have the twenty-one hundred dollars.
If you buy, if you wait, but, or if you buy them now, then they're going to expire two years sooner than they would if you didn't buy them. Then we have ten bottles if they waited, oh, if you waited two years to buy them, they'll expire two years later than if you bought them now.
I, essentially, yes, but regardless, the bottles still only have a certain shelf life, so if we bought two now, as opposed to buying them in two years, there's still the shelf life that they have. We just not having to buy all the bottles at once. That's, that's what I was trying to keep from. Is just buying, spending, you know, ten grand on eight bottles all at once is what I'm trying to keep from, but.
So with the rank, when you buy them bottles?
Do what?
So with the rank, when you buy all them bottles?
We just got the drainer looking pretty, we gotta keep it.
I got to write it in.
I lost them in that drink, though. My estimation?
Well, I understand, way I, I mean, we know that one of these days, they're all gonna go.
Yeah.
And when they, when all eight goes worth sixteen thousand dollars? Or do we buy two now and two more next year and keep the rotation going and keep good equipment? You know, I wouldn't put the damn thing, I'm going to burning fire myself, I wanna make sure that at least it was.
Well, if they don't work, you buy them now, but.
Well, you really sometimes don't know where you work, do you, put them on?
You don't know what's gonna happen until you get them hydro. And if they are past date, they're not gonna hydro. And if we stick somebody in a fire and they get hurt with a non-hydro tank, then we are going to get sued. And NFA is gonna come and go and harass us. But we're not at that point yet.
So what, can you tell me what the benefits of having a paid and another, another paid fireman, cause you're a paid fireman? What's the benefits to having another one?
Well, most of the stuff down there is more than one man operation. Um, really, essentially, to be perfect would be to have six paid firemen down there. Um, but, another paid fireman, you know, about repair work, trucks, um, calls, um, especially if I'm gone, you know. Sometimes I, everybody's working, sometimes everybody's working, and I've got stuff that I have to do. Like, I'm used Kenny a lot, and Roger, I think, is getting a little irritated by that, but.
We're losing a police officer, I guess I just heard tonight, one is resigning, so.
She resigned her last day, it'd be tomorrow.
What if we didn't hire another one and we made our, or, or we demanded our chief take up that slack and hired a fireman? And just see how it went? It might, it might work out, I, I mean, our fire department is, I'm, I don't know if it's generally this way in cities, that there's such a big gap in funding for the fire department versus the police department, but, I mean.
I mean, I can rely on volunteers, and if they're, if they're all working, I'm, I step by myself.
I know all about that. As chief, seven years, I know all about this, what's going on. I didn't have no car to drive. As we is all volunteer, well, I got paid a little bit. Apparently dollars a month is what I got.
Back in the day, people walked uphill, going to school and council, too, but that's not, that's back in the day.
I mean, it's obviously a necessary thing that we have progressed to have a fire department like we have. I'm just thinking we might wanna consider investing in it a little more than we do.
I mean, you guys don't even have a shower with a shower in that one. And testicle holding, contaminated the homes after cold.
Yeah, but if we put a shower in there, they'd want soap.
They'd bring their own.
Bring their own soap.
I mean, technically, I mean, we're even required to have washing machines washed every year, this, this stuff, you know. You know what I mean? I mean, it's just, Willard is being taken by the fire department now, about us.
What's the population?
Twelve.
Twelve hundred people?
Eight paid officers, all of them.
How many paid, was it all wrapped? We have six, six or seven?
Eight officers.
Paid firemen, six or seven, I think, including the chief and assistant chief. There may be eight now.
I would just like to see us considerate, I mean, I don't know a lot about our department, I just, I think.
I wrote a grant for four people, so hopefully we're gonna get that.
Could you check on all the surrounding towns? On what they actually have and get those figures to maybe, to make a handle?
Yep.
Workup population.
See, Lebanon is a lot bigger.
You have to look at towns of three thousand population.
Surround towns are a little above.
Go to Marshfield or Lebanon, because their tax bases are entirely different than ours, your square footy, their square miles of operation is entirely different.
Yeah, we need to do comparative government, towns are our size.
Government's the same size as ours.
We get to the surroundings, too.
It's Fairedrow.
Because we know what they're.
Fairedrow's got a paid chief, they're fixing those, we just trying to get that pushed for more, but he's a fire protection district. Some of these towns are fire protection districts, too.
What does that mean? They?
Got their own taxes.
Yeah, they have. A board like this is just for the fire department.
Could we create a fire protection district here? I mean, it'd be unpopular with taxpayers, but.
No. They, if, it'd be like, if Buffalo Road went to a fire protection district, then they would just contract, or Banff, of course, they're a fire protection district. If their dues, their dues makes the city contracts out. They would go to a fire protection district then.
And then the city would, some money would then incorporate it.
There used to be one, huh? All that long ago, just south of.
Southern counties still there.
Well, no, the southern is still there, but there was one between that and Buffalo that was a park.
Was that Apple? Apple?
Foose, please?
I think, I think, cause they'd ride up and, and maybe even handle a small part of Buffalo, we could ride. But it definitely is.
Does anyone have any further questions for a fire chief? Anyone have any objection to missing our fire chief? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, we have a gun, huh?
Sure.
People are crazy around, huh?
We could put, we could put the Sears back in those gene guns inside the side.
All right. Anyone?
When's our next meeting?
Wednesday.
It's, it's kinda my thoughts here, that everyone's wishlist, uh, we might maybe pick one little thing on there, uh, maybe, and stick with the budget we have. We're still, even with the budget we have, outside of it, not counting the wish list, we still need to trim sixty-six thousand dollars, is that correct, David?
Yeah, depending on what you wanna do about the transportation fund.
What are those?
Those are for Wednesday, but I've lost your, the agenda.
Mine's lost.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, here it is. Right, August twentieth, no, this is today's.
I was just short one for some reason.
And Wednesday we'll meet with, uh, Gus and Roger, is that correct?
And Lynn.
And Lynn.
Yes.
Recycling, sir? No, no, it's, it's left as.
Gus took care of it?
I, I guess, yeah. I haven't, uh, Gus has been out, had some, uh, oral surgery or something. And I haven't had a chance to talk to him.
I think that that was on the budget originally, was another paper, and that the recycling center before all that happened.
Does anyone have any questions, comments concerning?
How many vehicles do we need to buy overall?
How many what?
We need to buy some vehicles.
That's the point?
We're, some vehicles, we're gonna have to buy Gus a vehicle. One who's got door falls off. I mean, there are a family, Roger earlier bought him another one. Roger's transmeters going now. Uh-huh. Roger's transmeters going now. Yeah, Roger's gonna have to have a utility, the water meter, meter, really needs a wheelbarrow pickup for us. I mean, she gets around with an S ten pickup, and whenever there's snow and ice on, she can't hardly get from one part of the road to the other floor.
But she uses one of the, the guys from the street department uses one of their vehicles. And we talked to her about that the other day, she can get around in the wintertime, I mean, it gets done. I, I, I did get a message saying I wanna bring that up to the board, Lee Proctor has that plot of land over by the police station, and I think he was gonna build his, his rifle range or his own trading facility there. And, uh, I guess he's not going to now and wants to know if the city wants to buy that plot of land, I just wanted to bring that up to.
Yeah, they're thinking of.
Oh, no, I, and I don't think the city should buy it, we've had, we've had, what, Debbie, how many, ten properties up for tax sale today? We sold two of them, so there's eight parcels left, no one even wanted to bid the bare minimum.
I don't, I'm not favored by.
Okay, I just wanted to put that out there, anyone in favor of buying? Okay.
We gotta think now, keep this in back of your mind, is that the county's gonna try to sell us that, uh, road district down there that belongs to the county down on, uh, Mill Street. And I think that we need it, but we need, kinda need to be in position to buy it.
I think our capital improvement sales tax will buy that.
No, but I mean, we're talking about that, but we don't wanna go in there so far into the capital improvement sales tax that we leave that out. You know, I think we need to kinda look at some of those things for the future, and that's gonna be coming up, they're just waiting to get it appraised.
I, it'll be months before they get around them.
No, it won't, they, they already told leader to, they priced to, uh, phrase, the decision's gonna be, do we buy it or do they put it on public ballot? We have first option to buy.
The, the what?
The county's road show down in those.
Oh, okay, all right. Do we have the first option to buy?
They're gonna offer it to us.
Is that a verbal commitment, mustn't have been writing?
And if, and if we refuse it, they're not selling it.
I, I think we should buy it.
I think we need to buy it, there isn't any question.
As a matter of figuring out.
We'd sure keep it cleaner and nicer than county, for sure.
Guess you can buy it for us and we'll put your name on it.
You've already put my name on that house down there, Wayne Rishell.
Put, put your name on the waiting site.
And we don't even know what that thing's gonna cost, she, of course.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Your say?
Yes.
All those in favor?